That's impressive. Didn't have to use a gavel or anything. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. We have another room for people. Is that full up too? In any event, I wish we had a bigger place, but we'd have to build it. Probably shouldn't do that. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man. Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Motion to excuse man.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The invocation tonight is from Imam Kamal Abdul-Jabbar. And is it Masjid?
Masjid.
Imam W.D. Mohammed, right?
Yes. Bow your head. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, all praises are due to God, the guardian evolver of all the systems of knowledge in the universe. O God, we humbly stand before you, asking peace, understanding, and love amongst this gathering of honorable people assembled here, and peace, understanding, and love for all the people of the world. Bless our leaders of this country and abroad with pure hearts and clarity of minds to make the best decisions for all the citizens under their leadership. We understand that the diversity that exists throughout society is a part of your divine plan. Help us to realize the differences should not be a source of contention, but an avenue of unity with everyone bringing their best developed selves to the table for the betterment of humanity. Let us strive as in a race to attain righteousness in all that is good and pleasing to you. We thank you for all that you have blessed us with. Amen. Amen.
Thank you very much. Would the ranking explorer scout lead us in the pledge? Are they here? Can't do that. Goes to you.
Right hand over the earth. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) 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 One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Where's Henry?
Right there.
Fisher, I couldn't see you. Do you want to do the choir now?
Whatever you'd like.
Why don't we start with that, okay?
All right. As a choir from the Antelope Valley High School, would you all come on down and kind of face right here? Let me just say to the mayor, vice mayor, council, staff, our city manager, and all of you, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. Now, I like to use a word that probably most of you won't be familiar with, but let me use it anyway. There's a heap of y'all in here today, tonight. So we're thankful for that.
They all heard you were coming, and they filled the house for you.
While he's getting them set up to do this, it was you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council and the city of Lancaster who sponsored this whole Justice Sunday, which took place on the 15th of January, which was Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And there's no way that we can thank you all enough for what you have done. And these young people here, plus others that you will see tonight, made it all happen. Rick, thank you. Oh, is our vice principal here? Principal.
I'm excited for what you're about to hear.
All right.
(Inaudible)
Relax and do what you do, but enjoy and do it.
This is my quest, to follow that star, no matter how hopeless.
Yes, sir.
No matter how far, to fight or to run, without question or cost. To be willing to march into hell for a heavenly cause. This is my quest, to follow that star, no matter how hopeless, no matter how far, to fight or to run, without question or cost. To dream, the impossible dream.
Don't you leave, you'll be getting us a tippy.
No, now you gotta come back to the guy. No, I'm serious.
Mr. Mayor, if I may introduce a young lady who will call up the leaders, Rick, of course, the guy who played the piano and... I don't know what I'm talking about.
Okay, real quick. We just thank you for the opportunity to be here today, just to recognize the instructors and the mentors who put so much time and effort in working with our children. These are our future leaders. Our theme this year was empowering our youth through our journey for justice. And we all know, this is the time, more than ever, we have to empower our young people to let them know that we're here for them, and we're willing to do anything we can to make them successful in their struggles that they're going through, and know that they can accomplish anything that they choose to. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Ricky Bullard. This is our instructor and mentor of our choir, Antelope Valley High School. We have Mr. Nigel Holly, also from Antelope Valley High School, who is responsible for coaching our speakers. They selected individuals that they wanted to represent through the journey, Mr. Holly. We'd also like to call up Sergeant Robin Reed, ROTs, come on up, from Highland High School. They're represented here today as well. And I'm not sure if Ms. Cherie Culver, from the Pen or Pencil Mentoring Program, is here today. Is she in the room? Okay, we'll go forward. So these are the instructors and mentors who are responsible for guiding our children through the journey for justice. At this time, for our presentations, we have Ms. Glenna McGee, who's gonna be representing Mr. Tom Lackey, the assemblingman for the 35th District, and Mayor Rex Paris, and the city officials of Lancaster. Okay.
That doesn't look like Tom Lackey.
I'm his face when he's not around.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Exactly.
They're gonna read the names?
Yes. Ricky? You know your people's names. Come on up, sir. Oh, you have... Oh, great, great, great. Okay, great.
Good afternoon. Cadet Colonel Patrick Barrios.
You want to shake the official's hat?
Cadets, First Lieutenant Sazness. And Cadet Quinn Thompson. We had Cadet Chelsea Bozart, she's not here this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. She is our cadet.
All right. For our fabulous Antelope Valley High School a cappella choir, we have Miriam Alvarado, Alexis, Clarin, Cheyenne Luscon. Come on down now, when I call your name. Now, come on, come on, come on. That's what I said. Okay, well, come on around, please. Thank you, okay, come on around. Thank you. Shake hands with all the good-looking people over there, go ahead. And I hold on, I hold on to your things, and I give them to you when we get out there. Just shake hands and keep smiling. All right. Jeremiah Gardner, Jeremiah Gardner, come on down. Kaylin Collins, Zalea Manis, Andrew Burgos, Natalie Palacios, Marisol Torres, Eileen Soto, Elizabeth Lopez, Samantha Taylor, Eric Hall, Enrique Guadalupe, Ashley Augustus, Mackenzie Sessoms, Amber Edmondson, Jennifer Jimenez, Sequiya Salaman, Jasmine Shannon, Marginali Sosa, Heidi Upe, and Michael Ingo. Give them a hand. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, he's gonna give them to me. Hey, wait a minute, you need to take a picture. Any more pictures, okay. Can I leave somebody?
Well, thank you guys all for coming out and supporting our youth. This next group are the ones that did the actual presentations, and the ones that did the backup support behind the scenes. The first up is Deion Anderson, who is our emcee. Next up is China Gilchrist, she kicked off the program. Next up is Eugenia Hernandez. Next up is Ashley Barnes. And Ashley was Harriet Tubman, so if you guys happened to see the one walking with the shotgun, that was her. Next up is Sammy Santiago. As Crispus Addicks. Next up is Jennifer Sanchez. Next up is Aaron McGuire. Next is Desiree Davis. And then the next is gonna be our supporting cast, which would be Chloe Rivera, Maya Santiago, and LaShawn Branch. And of course, you have to say the best for last, Samantha Arnberg. And the man with the plan, Nathan Chavez. They're not gonna let me mess up back here. All right. Okay, the next group we're gonna introduce is the Pen or Pencil Mentoring Program. Okay, Summer Moss, Paris Moss, Nathaniel Matthews, Kayla Cap pepper, and Kiana Delancy. And the last group here would be the Clouds of Glory. This is the dancing team. Phoenisha Sims, Anisha Brooks, and LaShawn Horeilly. Jody, can we get you up here to take the picture?
Mr. Mayor and council, all of you here tonight may not know exactly what this means to me tonight, to see these young people of all of the cultures in one group. And they're enjoying each other. And I hope that we don't forget to push that here in our community, particularly in the city of Lancaster. We're pushing that every one of us look after every one of us. And if we don't do that, I don't know how we're gonna survive. Thank you so very much. I thought I'd take advantage of why you all are trying to figure it out.
Where's the captain? Need your help. They get nervous when you're around. Today, we are recognizing some of the members of our local sheriff's explorers academy. These young men and women recently participated in the annual Chandler Police Explorer competition. The team competed in honor of Sergeant Steve Owen. And through their combined teamwork and strength, they earned several top awards, including first place in the 10-man TK-4 pull, and you're gonna find out what that is in a moment. It's actually very impressive. Second place in the five-man TK-4 pull, and second place in the 10-man high-risk search warrant competition. The TK-4 pull is a physically grueling event that involves pulling a TK-4, which is an armored SWAT vehicle. This event opens with a sprint, followed by a team effort to pull the vehicle a long distance, then a second sprint. After that, they need to push the vehicle back in place, then finish with a final sprint. And I'm a little disappointed you didn't ask me to be on the team. The high-risk search warrant event involves a stressful scenario filled with booby traps and several role players. Competitors are judged on tactics used. Tonight, we congratulate these sheriff's explorers on not only their recent awards, but on the dedication, determination, and teamwork that it took to receive them. These young people represent the future of our region's law enforcement, and I would suggest they represent the future of our city. And we are all very proud of their many achievements. Thank you. Okay, when I call your name, come on up and stand behind me. Deputy Addington. Matthew Alvarado. I'm gonna give them to you. You can give them out. Alex Anaya. Francesca Beza. If they're not here, just let them back down there. Carlos Lira. Steve Lugo. Marlon Martinez. Nancy Mercado. I don't even wanna try this one. I'll let you do that.
Alex.
There you go. Alex. Alex, come here a minute.
Yes, sir.
Tell us.
O'Callaghan.
Okay, we're good. All right. Victoria Rivero. Trust me, it looked a lot worse on paper. Gabriel Rodriguez. Joseph Schirmeister. Hope Timmons. Austin Weigant. And last but not least, Nicholas Jordan. Reserve Deputy Cooper. He's the... You know, Deputy Cooper probably works 60, 70 hours a week for what he does in the city. And you know what they pay him? A dollar a year. He's one of our heroes.
Before taxes.
Okay, thanks, guys. City manager, anything to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to ask that CC9 be removed and scheduled for future agenda, and we do apologize for any inconvenience that may cause.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I abstain. I wasn't here last night.
Aye. One abstention, otherwise unanimous. Anything on the consent calendar we should pull?
Adjust CC9.
Adjust CC9. Guys, you're messing me up on the notes.
That would be Brit, sir.
Humility is good for us all. Are there... All right. Any speaker cards on the consent calendar?
I don't know where the speaker cards are.
Where are the speaker cards? Okay. There are none? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar pulling CC9.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Approved. Okay, NB1. Any speaker cards? Fran, come on up. Could somebody help Fran with the microphone, please? Oh, that's right, you want to do it after the presentation, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That'd be better, I think.
Okay. So, Jason, you're on.
Mayor and council, first let me tell you how exciting it is to work here. And I mean that. Due to the fact that we have great staff, a great city council, and a great community, this city is able to do projects and programs that most cities aren't even able to contemplate, much less implement. Today is one of those projects. Before today is a project to acquire or retrofit every one of our streetlights, 18,000 of them, with LEDs. This has been a multi-year project that culminates tonight with a contract to purchase the LEDs and enter a new contract to install those LEDs. I can remember our first meeting, Mayor, with SCE, where you expressed your displeasure with SCE and the way they were handling our streetlight system, not only the cost of that, but also the operation of that. And I used displeasure. I am here tonight to ask you all to vote against the growth of any medical or commercial marijuana in this city. As the Planning Commission looked at this issue, there were two major decisions to make. Number one, would the city sell marijuana? Would we allow distribution points in this city? And they very wisely determined that that would not be a good decision for Lancaster. The second question was cultivation, and they allowed for the cultivation in their meetings and in their minutes. I believe cultivation is wrong for Lancaster. I believe that, first of all, because recreational use is a harm to our city. I address recreational use because the Planning Commission minutes gave no promise that the proposed facility would not eventually become a plant for commercial use. According to the state websites, over 500 cities have already passed laws outlawing commercial cultivation. Despite what the majority of Californians say, I believe the continued proliferation of drugs for recreational use is detrimental to this entire state. And I say that the decisions that have been made on this subject will bring great harm to this state in the years to come. Recreational marijuana is detrimental to our whole society. The impairment experienced by even one marijuana cigarette affects judgment in a poor way. As a Christian, I am commanded to love the Lord my God with all my heart, with all my soul, and with all my mind. No God-fearing, Bible-believing Christian could ever smoke marijuana and obey the Word of God in that respect. One of the great advocates of legalized marijuana who travels from state to state promoting the cultivation and sale is Snoop Dogg. Snoop Dogg quoted a few months ago, "We just legalize marijuana in California. Smoke weed every day, everybody." Unfortunately, that's the spirit, and that's the actual habit that many have cultivated. One report from Colorado states that homelessness has increased by 20% since the legalization of marijuana. Traffic deaths are up 154% since the legalization of marijuana. In Washington State, twice as many fatal crash-involved drivers had THC in their system in 2014 compared with previous years. A few months ago, Rex, I received in my office a letter. It was a very detailed death threat. It stated when, and how, and where this particular individual would like to take my life. At first, I wasn't gonna really do anything with it, but a couple of the men in the church said, "You ought to probably show that to law enforcement." And they began to investigate and speak to me about the situation. I said, "What would possess someone to even put those thoughts on paper?" They said, "We don't really know exactly, other than to tell you, he's a habitual, daily marijuana user. That man is sitting in jail tonight, but he's a testimony to the fact that oftentimes the habitual use of this drug deranges people and takes them away from reality." The Bible is clear that God is not the author of confusion. His desire is for us to have a sound mind, and that drugs are a gateway to the occult. Secondly, I believe it's detrimental for business. A study among postal workers found that employees who tested positive for marijuana on a pre-employment urine drug test had 55% more industrial accidents, 85% more injuries, and 75% greater absenteeism compared with those who tested negative for marijuana use. Thirdly, I believe it's detrimental to our environment. California Bill 243 states that the Department of Pesticides is to regulate the drain-off from the pesticides used in growing marijuana. Already, there are several legal questions over water diversion and the impact on our environment by this particular industry. Not only do I believe recreational use is a harm to society, but secondly, I believe medical marijuana is not a legitimate industry. The federal government and the state government have let us down in this regard. They've not provided sufficient guidelines for us. The Department of Consumer Affairs of the State of California allegedly regulates the Board of Medical Cannabis, but there really was no consideration given to federal law, no consideration given to what may happen with our new Attorney General, and there are many questions related to the distribution of this particular drug. Even the fact that they've established dispensaries tells us that it does not meet the standard of distribution for a legal pharmacy. If we were here tonight discussing Pfizer developing a federally-approved drug, this would be a very different meeting. I believe this industry has issued questionable medical cards, and I am very thankful for the legal drugs that provide relief to people that are terminally ill, but a vast number of people who have no terminal illness and many times no illness at all are getting a hold of these cards. This last year, I was asked to counsel with a young man. His wife called the church and said, "My husband needs help." I began to talk with him about why his behavior changed. He had gone to a bogus doctor...
The contract in the amount of $2 million some odd dollars to BYD. For how long is that contract for? And what does it consist of?
We anticipate that it'll be a year long, but depending on the installation timeline, it could go beyond that. But we're going to be buying lights in periods of time. They obviously take time to construct and they take time to install. The anticipation will be a year long with BYD.
A year. Okay. So then down below, it says, "Recommendation: Approved One-Time Contract in Amount $739,980, so on and so on, to Taft Electric." Aren't they part of the BYD situation? And why are we paying them extra dollars?
There's two components of the installation. One is the actual product itself, the LED light itself. The other is the installation of that light. We went through procurement processes for both of those. Taft Electric was a successful bidder, and they'll be installing that through contract and contract labor.
Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Thank you, Fran.
Any discussion? Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB1 and NB2.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, great. Thank you. And now, the thing we all came to hear. And it's obviously going to be a struggle to get through all of this, so I would hope everybody recognizes that we are one city, and we will do this together in a mature, civil, loving way. And as long as that, those three rules are observed, I will wait as long as necessary. If the meeting goes till 5:00 AM, it goes to 5:00 AM. Before I have the staff do their presentation, I would like Pastor Chapel to come up and kick it off, if that's okay with you.
Well, happy Valentine's, everybody. And as I begin, I want to thank each of you for your service to our city. Raj and Marv and Angela, your labor has been a tremendous blessing to our city. Rex, your leadership has made this a much greater and a much safer city, and we truly are thankful for that. Thank you for fighting for Lancaster. Thank you for dealing with crime issues, and thank you for the leadership you provide and the sacrifices you all make on a daily basis. For many years, you have worked together to make this a better city, and all of us who've seen the improvements are grateful. On behalf of the 9,000 members of the Lancaster Baptist Church, I say thank you for the work that you've done on our behalf in this city. I am not here tonight to question your love for the city. I believe it's obvious that you do love this city. I'm not here tonight to question the sincerity of your faith. I'm not here tonight to oppose helpful, legal, federally-approved drugs delivered at a pharmacy. Rex, you were at the hospital with me when our son Larry battled cancer, and I'm grateful for the medicines that were available then and that are available now through the federally-approved system that is in place. I am here tonight to ask you all to vote against the growth of any medical or commercial marijuana in this city. As the Planning Commission looked at this issue, there were two major decisions to make. Number one, would the city sell marijuana? Would we allow distribution points in this city? And they very wisely determined that that would not be a good decision for Lancaster. The second question was cultivation, and they allowed for the cultivation in their meetings and in their minutes. I believe cultivation is wrong for Lancaster. I believe that, first of all, because recreational use is a harm to our city. I address recreational use because the Planning Commission minutes gave no promise that the proposed facility would not eventually become a plant for commercial use. According to the state websites, over 500 cities have already passed laws outlawing commercial cultivation. Despite what the majority of Californians say, I believe the continued proliferation of drugs for recreational use is detrimental to this entire state. And I say that the decisions that have been made on this subject will bring great harm to this state in the years to come. Recreational marijuana is detrimental to our whole society. The impairment experienced by even one marijuana cigarette affects judgment in a poor way. As a Christian, I am commanded to love the Lord my God with all my heart, with all my soul, and with all my mind. No God-fearing, Bible-believing Christian could ever smoke marijuana and obey the Word of God in that respect. One of the great advocates of legalized marijuana who travels from state to state promoting the cultivation and sale is Snoop Dogg. Snoop Dogg quoted a few months ago, "We just legalize marijuana in California. Smoke weed every day, everybody." Unfortunately, that's the spirit, and that's the actual habit that many have cultivated. One report from Colorado states that homelessness has increased by 20% since the legalization of marijuana. Traffic deaths are up 154% since the legalization of marijuana. In Washington State, twice as many fatal crash-involved drivers had THC in their system in 2014 compared with previous years. A few months ago, Rex, I received in my office a letter. It was a very detailed death threat. It stated when, and how, and where this particular individual would like to take my life. At first, I wasn't going to really do anything with it, but a couple of the men in the church said, "You ought to probably show that to law enforcement." And they began to investigate and speak to me about the situation. I said, "What would possess someone to even put those thoughts on paper?" They said, "We don't really know exactly, other than to tell you, he's a habitual, daily marijuana user. That man is sitting in jail tonight, but he's a testimony to the fact that oftentimes the habitual use of this drug deranges people and takes them away from reality." The Bible is clear that God is not the author of confusion. His desire is for us to have a sound mind, and that drugs are a gateway to the occult. Secondly, I believe it's detrimental for business. A study among postal workers found that employees who tested positive for marijuana on a pre-employment urine drug test had 55% more industrial accidents, 85% more injuries, and 75% greater absenteeism compared with those who tested negative for marijuana use. Thirdly, I believe it's detrimental to our environment. California Bill 243 states that the Department of Pesticides is to regulate the drain-off from the pesticides used in growing marijuana. Already, there are several legal questions over water diversion and the impact on our environment by this particular industry. Not only do I believe recreational use is a harm to society, but secondly, I believe medical marijuana is not a legitimate industry. The federal government and the state government have let us down in this regard. They've not provided sufficient guidelines for us. The Department of Consumer Affairs of the State of California allegedly regulates the Board of Medical Cannabis, but there really was no consideration given to federal law, no consideration given to what may happen with our new Attorney General, and there are many questions related to the distribution of this particular drug. Even the fact that they've established dispensaries tells us that it does not meet the standard of distribution for a legal pharmacy. If we were here tonight discussing Pfizer developing a federally-approved drug, this would be a very different meeting. I believe this industry has issued questionable medical cards, and I am very thankful for the legal drugs that provide relief to people that are terminally ill, but a vast number of people who have no terminal illness and many times no illness at all are getting a hold of these cards. This last year, I was asked to counsel with a young man. His wife called the church and said, "My husband needs help." I began to talk with him about why his behavior changed. He had gone to a bogus doctor in Los Angeles and received a medical card for marijuana to cure his asthma. I've often wondered how the inhalation of smoke would cure asthma. As he began using this drug, he eventually left his wife, lost his job, and today he's living somewhere in the desert, using that card over and over again to purchase his marijuana. If this was an FDA-approved and given by a pharmacist and sold at CVS, all of this discussion would be very different. Then I would simply state that the delivery mechanisms are not properly regulated. California Bill 266 requires that transporters be state-licensed, but marijuana is showing up in a lot of places where we don't want to see it. Sheriff McDonald told me personally that medical marijuana wrappers have been found even on elementary schoolyards. These are the medical marijuana wrappers found in these places. And finally, there's an increased crime at the growing sites of these particular places. California City has had several burglaries in the last recent days since entering into this trade, and I believe that many more people will be in harm's way by those that would come to steal and rob for the drug. So recreational use, I believe, is a harm to this society. I believe our state will pay a price. Medical marijuana, I personally do not see as a legitimate industry at this point in time. And thirdly, I believe the law change in January will minimize the demand for medical marijuana. I believe that come January 18, when people are allowed to grow it in their own home, and many of these people that do this will, of course, grow it in their own home, I believe that the income that is projected for the city will wane very, very quickly. I'm not convinced of the long term of the benefit of medical marijuana as an income producer for the City of Lancaster. I believe there may be some who make money initially, and there may be some initial for the city. I'm concerned about the banking of all of that. Since it's not federally-approved, these companies cannot have a bank account. They have to deliver everything in cash, including the taxes, to the city, which is even more of a dangerous proposition. In conclusion, the gambling industry once promised that if we legalized Indian gaming, there would never be a need for educational funds again in this state. The last ballot, once again, was asking for money for education. I think that each of you know that we pray for you. We truly are grateful, and we respect you dearly. Just the things you do in these meetings, the time you take for it. Thank you again for doing that. But I want to say tonight, Sacramento is getting more and more wrong with every passing day. The laws that they are passing in so many areas are disgusting to those of us who hold the Christian faith. So I say to you tonight, let's get this right. Let's determine to do the right thing. Let Snoop Dogg and Jerry Brown keep their dope on Pier 39, but let's keep it out of the City of Lancaster. I want to be able to look back someday and tell my nine grandchildren that I did my very best to keep drugs out of their community. I would ask you to pull this from consideration and never look back again. As far as the revenue needs of this city, I want to thank you for the words behind you, and I want to tell you, if we'll keep trusting him, he'll take care of this city. A lot of people are praying for tonight, and again, thank you for all that you do. God bless you.
Paul. Paul. Not that easy. Do you have any doubt that if I could keep this out of the city, I would?
That if you could keep it out of the city, you would?
Yeah.
Well, I think we have an opportunity to do that tonight.
No, we don't. If we do nothing, then the state will say where the distribution is, where the retail sales are, where they can grow it.
But they can't tell our city to grow it or sell it?
Oh, no, 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 no. Yes, they do. If we do nothing, that's what will happen. That's the way that Proposition 64 was written, that if we turn back and never look at this again, it's coming. And it's coming anyway. I mean, people are going to grow this in their front yard. We all know that. That's what the voters voted for.
And I agree. I understand that.
We can't fix that.
I understand people are going to do that. Rex, I just feel that those individuals that do that, according to the laws that have been passed in our state, unfortunately, they'll stand before God for what they do. But as a city, we have to make these decisions and at least be responsible for what we do. I understand that this marijuana thing, and I understand much of this meeting tonight is a difficulty because it's coming like a tidal wave, but I think we can do as much as we can, just as they're trying to dam up the Orville Dam tonight. I think we can do as much as we can to keep it off of our cities, and that's what we're asking.
Let's hope they have more success.
Yes, I understand. I haven't read the news in the last few hours, but that's my heart, that we would not be culpable in any way as a city towards this particular industry. It's a conscience issue, and I recognize it's here to stay. I would be happy to garner a group of attorneys, and I would love it if you were one, and look for the weaknesses in these laws, look for the crimes that are being committed, because I feel the state has done a very sloppy job at the regulations that have been written. I think there's a lot of loopholes environmentally, safety-wise, and I know that there's people that want to have sanctuary cities in San Francisco and so forth, but I still believe we ought to have an opportunity to let the federal government help decide some of this. I'm not a fan of all the federal government either, but on this issue of safety, I feel our state is running amok, and I don't want to follow the trend of Sacramento in that. So that's really where I come back on that, so.
What do we do to say no?
Well, what you do is you put in a speaker card.
Can you get clarification on that? What? From Mr. Duricel on the distribution?
We got the city attorney. Am I correct about that? That if we do nothing, they can come January 1st?
It's my understanding that we can limit the cultivation and we can limit the distribution.
Those are two different things you just asked. If we do nothing at all?
Right. Wait, but wait a minute. We've already done that last March, I believe, that said it is illegal for distribution in the City of Lancaster and to grow it in Lancaster. Correct?
We did for medical.
What are we talking about tonight?
Medical.
What's the difference? Okay.
As it stands, it's coming, right?
It is.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the city.
I have many fears in life. I just discovered another one following a pastor as a speaker.
He's pretty good at it, too, isn't he?
Got a head start in a crowd. And I mean no disrespect, but there's certain things that we will probably disagree on and some additional facts. I think there are a couple of central points, which is the difference between medical and recreational, and Mayor Paris is exactly right. We have to act. The state has forced us to act. What we are going to do is I'm going to run through for a few minutes why this is before you, talk about some of the concerns that have been expressed over the last weeks. Allison will go over the ordinance with direction. We have a video from some of the supporters and advocates, which, Mayor, with your permission, we would play after Allison's done. The reason, I think, it will be respectful of the council's time, and they put a lot of their points in the video. First off, I want to say, and this is personal, we as staff, I know a lot of the planning commissioners I've spoken to, members of the community, we certainly understand and share the same concerns about marijuana, in particular abuse and recreational. Marijuana is a gateway drug. Some of us have firsthand experience of how bad it can be. We all know people that we are in our families or we've ministered to that with marijuana or other drugs that has hurt or ruined their lives. So we all come from that, and we all know people. But through this journey, we have also learned that like other drugs, some other drugs, there is unmistakable science that medical cannabis helps people, and we will show that. There's brochures, there's studies in the video you will see. It does help people, whether we want to admit it or not. The science doesn't lie in that regard. Mayor Paris is correct. The council has to deal with this. I have no doubt they would keep it out if they could, but Prop 64 requires you to go back and look at what you do with medical, and also, we're going to be coming with you, as Allison will say, on Prop 64. You will have to act, or you will cede control to the state in 2018, and that is not a good outcome. Couple points before we deal with the concerns. This is a public policy issue. Prop 64 makes it that way. It is necessary that you, as a council, act. It is not personal. It is not political. You have to act as a function of what you do. I think in that regard, we all owe it to ourselves to know what we're voting on and what this ordinance actually does. It was worked on at five separate public meetings by the Planning Commission, taking input. It significantly bans or restricts a lot. It bans outright sales, distribution, cash, et cetera, and significantly replaces restrictions on location and operation, which Allison will go in. It is also a responsibility to educate ourselves as to the benefits of medical marijuana or the lack thereof. I think you'll see some of that, but the science shows and people will show that it does benefit multiple afflictions and relieves pain. The other thing is that what we've tried to do here with the Planning Commission is significantly impact any negative that could come with this with significant restrictions while maximizing benefits to the community, whether those be jobs, local investment, or yes, the resources we are going to need to fight what's coming with Prop 64. We're going to need more law enforcement, and we are going to need social services. Like to briefly address some of the concerns, and then I'll turn it over to Allison. First, marijuana is a dangerous drug and a gateway drug. It is. It is when it's abused, just as painkillers and anabolic steroids are dangerous and gateway drugs. Painkillers and steroids are also medically appropriate and applied to certain afflictions and pain, just as medical cannabis is prescribed by doctors for certain afflictions and for pain. It was mentioned that anyone can get a medical marijuana card. It isn't properly regulated. I have no doubt that that is the case. That doesn't go to the value of cannabis to certain people medically. It goes to a regulatory scheme that the state needs to get better at, just like the state needs to get better at controlling alcohol, that's rampant epidemic on minors in our colleges and our high schools. It is a regulatory issue. We can ensure that what's cultivated in Lancaster will be for medical purposes. We can. The ordinance has a track system from seed to sale, which Allison will explain. Marijuana is a federal Schedule I drug, and it's illegal federally. That is absolutely true, and further, there has been discussed that that could change or even be intensified under the current administration. That concern could be somewhat mitigated by a couple of facts. Medical marijuana, medical cannabis is legal in some 28 states already. Secondly, the Department of Justice since 2013 has had guidance on this issue. It's called the COLE memo. What the federal government says basically is they will get involved when there is criminal enterprise, drug trafficking, interstate transport, other serious offenses. They leave it up to the states and locals to enforce their rule. Another concern expressed is Lancaster is moving too fast. We should wait for others. First off, as you well know, that's not our MO in most of what we do, but it's also, we're not anywhere near first. There are at least 34 that we could find with a quick look, cities throughout California that have some form of legalization of cultivation or manufacturing. Those would include Santa Barbara, Long Beach, San Jose, San Diego, big and small cities. There are also over 50 that are currently dealing with just what we are dealing with now, and we need to look no further than look at the Valley Press. It's around us. California City has already legalized it. Kern County has said they are drafting regulations that will allow dispensaries, cultivation, et cetera. Los Angeles County is going on that path, and Palmdale is considering as well. The last concern that I will address is crime will go up. This, we believe, is a well-crafted regulation with significant restrictions. There's no cash, there's no sales, there's 24-hour security, as Allison will go through. Quite honestly, I know that there will be more crime at some retail, at most retail institutions in both cities than there would at a medical cannabis cultivation facility. We do need the resources. We need resources because the state has given us gifts like Prop 64, Prop 47, Prop 57. The state never gives us resources to deal with the problems they foist on us. They give us the problems, okay? If we stand back and wait for others, it's never happened for us. We take care of ourselves. I want to sincerely thank Mr. Vos and his planning commission, any of you that had the opportunity to watch what they did and the discussions, from personal to everything that they had. We have a phenomenally good planning commission and a phenomenally good planning commission chairman, and I appreciate you leading the way on this issue for us. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison, and then we would show the video afterwards.
Before you go, what has bothered me the last two weeks is it was in front of the Planning Commission five times. Was there any opposition?
I don't, I wasn't at every minute of every meeting. I don't recall much.
There were a few people.
What?
There were a few people.
Were there this many people?
No.
Were the people that spoke here tonight, where were they? Were they there that are going to speak here tonight?
I can't tell. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's a rhetorical question. I mean, we have a procedure. There were five opportunities to have input into how it was drafted. It's now in front of us to vote on the package. I'm not sympathetic. I mean, these people spend hundreds of hours working for their city for free, only to... I've said enough. Go on.
Thank you. Allison will now go through the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and council members. Since the approval of Proposition 64 by the electorate in November, we find ourselves in the situation that if the city does not take action to address some gaps in its current ordinances and provisions of Proposition 64, the state will take control of marijuana regulation in Lancaster rather than maintaining local control here at the city. As a side note, as Mark mentioned, we will be back before you to discuss Proposition 64 in greater detail at a later date. In the context of Proposition 64's passage, the Planning Commission diligently worked to prepare and recommend an ordinance with strict limitations and requirements. It's worth noting that since the Planning Commission conducted its five separate hearings on this topic, further discussions of this ordinance brought up some additional substantive provisions that staff has researched and determined were appropriate for inclusion in the proposed ordinance, namely exclusion of trade schools from the definition of schools for purposes of the distance limitation for cultivation facilities, that I will discuss in a moment, and allowing cultivation facilities to also manufacture cannabis products within their operations. This proposed change would not alter the strict limitations imposed on these facilities under the proposed ordinance, is not expected to cause any additional impacts, and is consistent with the manner in which our research has determined these businesses typically operate. The provisions of the ordinance presented tonight include strict regulation of medical cannabis, including indoor cultivation of medical cannabis only, no dispensaries, distribution facilities, or delivery businesses, no recreational cannabis cultivation. This is a three-way regulation. There's regulation of the business owner or cultivator, regulation of the location, and regulation of the employees. And in fact, with regard to the employees, we've been accused of overreaching here, but believe it to be in the city's best interest to make sure a background check is done on each and every employee of a medical cannabis cultivation facility. each and every employee of a medical cannabis cultivation facility. The cultivator's license requirements impose obligations, limitations, and restrictions on the business owner, including background checks for the business owners, managers, and all employees, a requirement that all books, records, and other documents related to operations must be available for inspection by any city or sheriff's representative or official for purposes of determining compliance with the ordinance, that all cannabis be kept and stored in a secure manner with restricted access pursuant to city-approved security plans, no onsite smoking, ingestion, or consumption of cannabis, no sale or distribution of cannabis, and a requirement of a track-and-trace-from-seed-to-sale procedure reused to ensure that the cannabis is used for medical purposes only, and that any transfer of ownership or modification of operations in any manner requires reapplication to the city. The conditional use permit imposes strict requirements on the physical location of the operation, including an environmental plan, an emergency response plan, and strict security plan requirements, including 24-hour onsite security, 24-hour video monitoring of all means of ingress and egress, public areas, storage areas, limited areas, restricted areas, notifications to licensed alarm companies from the video monitoring system in the event of failure, as well as alerts to the sheriff's department, and a live feed accessible to the sheriff's department and city personnel via secure remote access to the 24-hour video monitoring of the facility. There's also a requirement for an odor filtration system to ensure that neighboring properties are not impacted. There's also distance requirements imposed prohibiting these facilities being located within 600 feet of a religious assembly, 1,000 feet of a public or private school, college or university, 1,000 feet of a daycare center, 600 feet of residential use or residentially designated property, 600 feet of a public park. These uses would be limited to the industrial zones and require strict enforcement. If first offense results in a $10,000 fine and a second and further offenses are $20,000 fines. Again, what is before you tonight is medical cannabis cultivation indoors, and if modified, manufacture only. The specific actions for you tonight are to consider introducing ordinance number 1019, adding chapters 5.56 and 17.43 to the Lancaster Municipal Code, and to determine whether to include trade schools in the definition of school, and determine whether to allow well-regulated cannabis cultivation facilities to also include manufacturing operations, which staff recommends. Adopt Resolution Number 17-04, establishing fees regarding regulation of medical cannabis. Adopt Regulation 17-05, establishing the maximum number of licenses and permits that may be used for cultivation of medical cannabis, and a few cleanups item per the motion language before you. And now Mark will introduce the video.
Mayor, if it's okay, the video we would show now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Luke.
I'm Dr. Alan Shackelford. What you will see in this brief presentation is remarkable. It's unlike anything that I, in my 30 years of medical practice, have experienced, and it's based on medical marijuana. You may have preconceived notions about what that means, but please watch the next few minutes with an open mind. I think you'll be astonished at what you learn.
So Charlotte has Dravet syndrome. It's a severe pediatric epilepsy. The seizures when they start with Dravet are status. They don't stop on their own, so they're 20 minutes or 30 minutes or longer. I think her first one was about a half hour. Every seizure after that for two and a half years was a status seizure, and some were four hours long, two hours long. And, you know, at that point, she's intubated in the ER, in the pediatric ICU, and medicine doesn't stop them. So that's, we went through that for about two and a half years. We got diagnosed at two and a half years old. The doctor, you know, she heard her history of seizures at that time and said, "We have to pull this, her last med that she was on." Her exact words, "We have reached the end of the line with medical options for Charlotte." And I don't know what to tell you, there's really nothing else we can do. And that's when we met the Stanleys, and that's when we got started on the CBD, after six months of, I really didn't think she would survive the seizures, 300 seizures a week, roughly. And so to see her seizure-free for a whole, for seven days, she went seven days instantly. And we've been on it nine months, and from that, 300 seizures a week, she now has zero to one tonic-clonic a week. And so it's greater than 99% seizure reduction. And it's amazing. It's just absolutely amazing to think that she wasn't going to survive, and look at her now, she has a life. During that time, she lost the ability to walk, talk, eat, and really just, you know, participate in life at all. She couldn't do anything. She just sort of lied in my arms, catatonic. And I thought that was it. There just wasn't a life for a person. But here we are.
Bellarina!
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 Hi, you're live.
Yeah.
In the three months since we first met her, we saw a change. She was now talking more.
Say puppy!
Puppy!
Yee!
She's horseback riding.
Good girl!
She even rides a bike on her own. And the special strain made for Charlotte is now named for her. It's Charlotte's Web.
It is Charlotte's Plant.
It's Charlotte's Plant. Not anymore. Now it's for all the children.
More than 41 children are using Charlotte's Web here in Colorado. All of them are reporting significant seizure reduction, and there are dozens more on a wait list, hoping, praying that a plant could change their lives, just like it did for Charlotte.
I'm gonna get you!
You both seem very at peace.
I'm very at peace, yeah. Very peaceful.
We've been given a great life, you know, and so unfortunately Charlie has this Dravet syndrome. But thank God we've got something now that's working.
Dr. Boaz Lev is with Israel's Ministry of Health. Here, they have pioneered marijuana research. They were the first to isolate THC and CBD decades ago. And now the country's ministry licensed 10,000 patients to use marijuana medicinally and has approved more than a dozen studies to treat illnesses like PTSD, pain, Crohn's disease, even cancer. It's a state-run nursing home outside of Tel Aviv. Residents here are using marijuana for pain, loss of appetite, Parkinson's disease, and dementia. Moshe Root is one of those residents. He was 77 when he smoked his first pipe of marijuana. He's 80 now, and he smokes a couple of times a day. It's to help with the pain and the hand tremors caused by a stroke.
So it's a mixture of tobacco and marijuana?
He even decided to light up during our interview to stop his hands from shaking.
You're saying your hands are steady because of the marijuana?
Zebatuah! It also helped ease a deeper pain hidden from sight. You see, Moshe is a Holocaust survivor. When his wife died a couple of years ago, he was haunted by nightmares of his childhood hiding from the Nazis. The marijuana, he says, took him out of the darkness.
I suffer from multiple sclerosis, and I've had it for almost 20 years. And I have been, in the last 15 to 20 years, I've had a lot of difficulty, have had a lot of difficulty with spasticity, which is a symptom of multiple sclerosis, and medical cannabis helps me a lot with my spasticity and being able to relax my muscles, because my muscles get real tight and real tense, and so the cannabis helps that an awful lot.
From arthritis pain, I have severe arthritis in the spine and on my left side and the knee, the ankle, and the toes. Makes it difficult to walk. I can walk in short spurts, but it is painful. The use of cannabis alleviates the pain. I don't like taking chemicals, which are your opioids, and you can't get them readily from doctors anymore. They're severely regulated by the federal government, and I understand that. People have abused them. They're not good. I prefer the natural way. I prefer cannabis.
My experience with cannabis started some years ago after a major back surgery, when I had some disc removed from my spine, and I was prescribed an enormous amount of pills for pain, for muscle relaxing, and a variety of other issues after my surgery. My stomach was not available to handle the chemicals that those pills were giving me, so I turned to cannabis as a positive alternative, which was very successful with me. I was allowed to eat. I felt better with my stomach. I could sleep better, and my overall quality of life was quite a bit better than when I was using pill medication. So in that regard, that is the main reason why I use this product.
Well, I've used cannabis for many years as an alternative to pharmaceutical drugs. I am a two-time cancer survivor, multiple surgeries, multiple exploratory surgeries, where it's prescribed multiple times what I would call the real gateway drugs that kind of drive you in the wrong direction. I found cannabis to be the alternative that allowed me to live my life as myself, allowed my family to recognize me as who I was again. You know, something that doesn't get said enough is, this is a natural substance, you know, and I don't know how better to say it than I thank God and Mother Nature for medical cannabis.
I've been practicing cannabinoid medicine since 2000. I've seen about 2,500 patients. I've never felt more like a physician than I have since I've been recommending medicinal cannabis and evaluating patients. Its breadth of application is truly amazing. I mean, I've been impressed with the effect on people with neurodegenerative disease, like Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, cerebellar degeneration. I've also been very impressed with its effectiveness in treating autism and other things and autism spectrum disorder. I had one set of parents who said that there was a 30% improvement in their child, and they'd never seen such a rapid improvement with any medication that they had received.
It was in 2005 that I got involved in the medical cannabis world of preparing products, extractions, and formulations of various types. Since 2005, I've been doing that, and now we're now embarking on a new realm of activity with, which is sanctioned, permitted, structural aspects regarding to the statutes in the State of California and other states in the United States. The medical community, and especially the science community, is beginning to realize that now it's out in the open, and where people in the scientific community are saying, yes, this is something of value, this is something that needs to be addressed, and this something that needs to be researched and put into products. It's undeniable now, there is no basis that one can say there is no science or clinical aspects of treatment for patients. Absolutely not. The time is now.
Started Pure Tech, and started with a couple of machines, and we started making tablets, encoding tablets, and from the very beginning, we always had the best water system. We had a micro lab on premises so that we could control the drugs that we were manufacturing. And further than that, we could, on a consistent basis, make the same product consistently every single time we made a batch. That's the key. Controlling the dosage so that every single time the patient is going to get a dosage in a capsule or a tablet, it's the same. So my ultimate goal at the end of the day is to take the pharmaceutical level of quality and standards and bring it into the cannabis and marijuana industry so that people will get the products that they need in a controlled environment and a healthy way so they can get better and improve their everyday health.
Yeah, medical cannabis is, I mean, it's helped a lot since day one for me, but ever since I got like my regimen of, you know, how to take and when to take what, it's helped. The medical cannabis has helped immensely, and getting off all the pills.
Well, when he was first in the hospital, he was on a lot of heavy-duty pain meds, as are wounded warriors, you know, IV, Dilaudid, all those kinds of things, because they're in a lot of pain. So they come out, they're still in a lot of pain and still taking these meds, but it ruins their quality of life. Like if you're always taking a whole bunch of meds and nodding out and stuff to get rid of pain, your quality of life has gone down as well. Besides that prolonged use of Xanax and stuff, he started not being himself after he was taking Xanax for a long time. And when he started using medical marijuana, it made a whole difference in what he took for pain meds, anxiety meds, and it's been a big change.
Can't really affect a father when I'm just, you know, zoned out all day. The cannabis helps me not to, and kids just look at it as my medication, period.
Allow me to suggest that this is a very difficult decision for us, and we are not persuaded by who claps and who doesn't. We will look into our hearts and into our minds, and we will come up with the very best decision we can make. And quite frankly, I don't care what the popular thing to do is or isn't. We will do what's best for a city that we love and for the people in the city we love and for a system of government that we love. And with that, before we take a break, I'd like to leave some questions with you that at least I'm going to need to have answered. This is a democracy. 54% of the people in this city voted for 64. That's a fact. How do we just ignore that? I would like to find a way, because I really do not think 18-year-old kids should be smoking this anytime they want, or anyone else for that matter. But that is the law. If you can come up with a way that makes sense, I'm open to it. The other thing is, somebody has to tell me that this ordinance will result in one seed, one more seed landing in the streets of Lancaster, because the way we crafted it was to prevent that. If we left a hole, I'd like to hear where it is. Those are my two biggest concerns. And then, tell me how to deny this to people who it helps, because it does. There isn't any doubt about that. There isn't also any doubt that it's a gateway drug. There's a lot of bad stuff comes with this. But you can't deny the good stuff that comes with it. I don't know how to deny this to people who are in pain, or people who have MS, or people who have cancer, who tell me it helps them. If you can tell me how to do that, I'd like to hear it. But that's not the Christianity you've taught me, Paul. It's just not. With that, we'll take a break. Come back. Let's come back. All right. Dennis Anderson. You all remember Dennis? I'm calling Dennis because then I won't be the only one with so many of his friends unhappy with him today.
I can't tell you, Mr. Mayor and the council, what a delight it is to be here addressing you and not covering you. That's a privilege. And actually, it was my time at the Valley Press that put me on the road to the present moment and your suggestion. Mr. Anderson, I think you should go to Iraq, and so I did. But that said, since leaving the Valley Press, I know a state-certified clinical therapist with a practice for veterans and military families from the USC program, Fight On. I also oppose recreational marijuana, voted against it. I think there are social ills. I think there are threats to our youth, and I think circulated in community in as erroneous in as many fashions as it is, it's something that we battle, like we battle alcohol and like we battle street drugs, and it is a battle. My real discussion is about veterans like my brother, Gerald. He will come and account for himself in a few moments, and his story is his own. I can say we were in the same armored cavalry regiment, only 30 years apart, and, because I'm younger. But what I... But what I learned coming home from Iraq was that we fielded the most over-medicated armed forces in our history. It is a historic matter of the wars that we have been fighting, mostly antidepressants and also opiates. Numbers of VA patients grew over 11 years of the War on Terror, 11%. Narcotics prescriptions grew 259%. These are the VA's numbers. Catastrophically wounded, Gerald was blown up on May 29, 2007. It was a birthday, it was Memorial Day. He was supporting special forces in Baghdad, and they all did their job. So the catastrophically wounded, they experience different levels of trauma. Physical, post-trauma stress disorder, traumatic brain injury. PTSD sufferers are over-prescribed with drugs that are counter-indicated. Many veterans do not trust the VA to prescribe for them. They fear mixes of drugs that will give them suicidal ideation, and they have enough of that already. A word about cannabis referenced from the evidence presented with the film. My experience with combat veterans from the OIF, Iraqi Freedom, and OEF, Afghan, is that they experience symptom reduction specifically with sleep. It calms re-experiencing, it calms nightmares, and it prevents the insomnia that then creates other kinds of suffering. So my very personal position, I'm not here speaking morally or legally, only experientially as someone in the clinical world. I do believe we owe them their earned rest, and there should be longitude in a long-term study on the benefits, how and why does it work? But I gotta say, if there is any group in America that should catch a break, shouldn't it be our wounded warriors? Shouldn't it be Gerald? Shouldn't it be that band of brothers and sisters? And I know we have brothers and sisters out here who come down on both sides of the issue, but I hope and trust the city council will act wisely on their behalf and the behalf of Specialist Hancock. Thank you. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you. No, I'm good. Forgot my wheelchair. I don't, you know, I can't give you guys numbers and facts and everything like everyone else has done, but what I can do is tell you that from my experience, I was, well, when I got hurt, I was blown up in my tank and I was instantaneously paralyzed. And I watched myself burn for 30 minutes before I went unconscious. So when I first came home, I would just take everything I could to try to fall asleep to forget it, but that's really when I would remember it the worst. And then I'd take sleeping pills that I'd have to dedicate eight hours of sleep to, but I could only get three. So I'd be groggy as heck for half the day by the time that wore off. I was so messed up on other pills that I'd just be zoned out half the time. And basically, if it wasn't for my mom being across the street, there's no way I could have kept my kids and taken the pills. And I could have went in and asked for more all day from the VA. And they'll give them to you, but if it's not helping you, what's the purpose of having them? And when I started using medical cannabis, I was, I was on 80 milligrams of pretty high, I was on 80 milligrams of methadone, which I slowly weaned off, and now I take 40. And I don't have to take sleeping pills to try to get three hours of sleep. And I don't take Xanax or Ativan because, for my mood and stuff during the day, and I'm able to sleep fine at night. And I have dreams maybe once or twice a week, but compared to being up for two or three days at a time, so I didn't have to have those dreams and not being able to sleep, it's most definitely given me a better quality of life, which, you know, is translates to my kids having a better quality of life. And, you know, that's pretty much my, I just, I'm just trying to watch out for my kids now because I don't, I can't do a lot of stuff. So I just, you know, I can't be an effective father when I'm sitting there, you know, stuck off pills. And I could probably go tomorrow and they'd just write me a prescription to get me off their back, but, I mean, that's not what I need. So if I had a prescription pad, I'd sit 30 seconds so I came up, I'd burn it because there's nothing that they can write me that's going to help me. So, I mean, having a way to control it so I know I'm getting the same dosage and it's not, you know, making sure it's controlled is also better than taking a medication from some place down in San Fernando Valley that's made by God knows who and has God knows what in it, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, that's pretty much my, I mean, and it helps me on a daily basis, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Yeah. And it's helped me get off a lot of pills and...
Gerald, thank you, and thank you for your service. Okay, so how do you all want to do this? We can do it with time limits, whether you saw the buzzer goes off, or I can kill the buzzer and we can do it however long you want to do it. What do you, is there a consensus? Buzzer or no buzzer?
No buzzer.
No buzzer.
Keep the time.
Keep the buzzer.
Okay. No buzzer. Now, you realize not only does half the audience...
I think they want the buzzer.
Buzzer.
Oh, you want the buzzer?
Buzzer.
Okay.
I think the consensus is the buzzer.
Okay. Do you want two minutes or three minutes?
Three.
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 They claim three minutes.
What do you say, Tom?
Three.
Okay. You got three minutes. Normally, how we would do this is you have the proponents and then the people who oppose it. Or I can shuffle the deck, we could do it that way. But I think we're going to do it the traditional way. First the proponents, then the opponents, and we'll go from there. And yes, it's true, I let Pastor Chapel speak first, but he's my best friend. And he asked. Oh, and we have some chairs down here if you want to sit down. And trust me, you do, because two, three hours from now, your feet are going to hurt. All right, you don't believe me? I warned you. Okay. Let's start. Three minutes. Bob, Selain?
I'm going to let Lisa speak first if you'd like.
I think she's much better.
I think so too. I'll give her my three minutes too.
Okay. No, you can't do that, actually, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll try to keep it sweet, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Good evening and thank you, Mayor, and council members and city staff. This is a big undertaking. I appreciate everything you're doing, and I hope you come to the decision that's the best for Lancaster. I am a cannabis compliance attorney. I represent numerous businesses throughout California, primarily in the city of Los Angeles, San Diego. I have clients in Humboldt, I have clients in Desert Hot Springs. I am all about regulation and enforcement, and I've worked with numerous cities and I'm currently working with counties and other cities, helping them navigate through the new laws that the city, the state just passed, which went into effect in 2016 and Prop 64. I have met with pretty much every state agency. I'm on a state stakeholder meeting where we sit down and we help with the rules and regs. So I am definitely very entwined in this industry, and I'm trying to do what's best for each city or county that approaches me. Most important is, in the city of Lancaster, if they are doing strictly cultivation and they do a trace and track, there will definitely be a way of knowing, this is some people's concern, that every plant in here is actually a medical plant, not a recreational plant, but a medical plant. Because what the state is going to do is they're going to create an RFID tag system that looks like this. This one says "medical" on it. This is from Colorado. The ones that they use in Colorado that are retail are blue. I have pictures here if you'd like to see them, I can give them to you later. But basically, when you are doing a seed-to-sale trace and track, every plant must be labeled what it is and will only be able to go through the distribution center to the ultimate dispensary based on what you have a license to do. And if you are growing something, or manufacturing something, or distributing something that is not licensed from the locality you have, you will not be able to get a state license, and the state will revoke your license if you're not obeying what the state is licensing you for. The city also will be able to do the same thing. So there's a double, it's a dual licensing scheme, which they will probably find to be very good for all the communities in the state of California. We find these types of businesses create many jobs, and they're good jobs, they're good-paying jobs, they are going to be labor jobs with unions, with living wages, and I really would like the city to really contemplate doing this because I think without regulation, you will have proliferation and you will end up with a horrible black market here. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Lisa. David Paul. So, David, are we still on first names, or...
Yes, sir. Happy Valentine's Day. You know I love you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
You know I love this city as well, and Mayor, I want to first thank you for the courage you've shown, and our city manager, Mark Wasigan, as well. You said true words up here, and I appreciate that. And what Lisa just said is the crux of this matter. If we don't do something, that is going to be a wide-open black market situation where it's going to be completely out of our control. And, you know, I don't think there's a person in here that doesn't believe that I love them or this city. And I'm committed to this city. I work when I can to do my best for this city. And this is a sensible ordinance that will protect the city. Now, the other side of this is the compassion issue, because marijuana is medicine, and you can call this anecdotal if you want, but I know this from my personal experience. You know, I was diagnosed with MS 15 years ago, and I had symptoms probably 10 years even before that, that I didn't even know what they were. And the pain sometimes is unbearable, the spasticity, the inability to sleep, all these things that people talked about are very real, and I get symptom relief from using medical cannabis. And I am not a pothead, I am not a person who you should look down on because of this very helpful drug that I use to make my life better. Without it, you know, the traditional drugs they gave me in the beginning almost killed me. I have two artificial hips, I can't see out of my eyes because of the steroids they gave me. Nobody warns you about that. They'll sip you pain pills, and they'll do this. It took me 10 years to convince my neurologist, who now writes medical marijuana prescriptions. So that's what it is. I don't think kids should use marijuana. There is some evidence that people are helped with bipolar disease and all these other things, no matter how old they are. The Charlotte's Web doesn't even have anything that gets you high in it. It's just a cannabinoid that is good for people, and that poor little girl with her relief, that's a glorious thing. So please, understand that we have to control this. We have to do what we can to put our marker down and make sure it goes to the people that benefit from it and not to those that want to exploit it for other means. You know my kids, they're good kids, they don't go out and run around and smoke pot, they would never do that. It's because I raised them right and they have supervision. So please, pass this ordinance, protect this city, and let's love each other enough to let each other use a medicine that actually works. Thank you.
Fran, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening again. Excuse me. You know, my name is Fran. Everybody knows me as Fran. But I agree with you and what you're going to be doing, Mayor, as far as the medical cannabis part of it is good, because like they said, it's going to come, and I'd rather see us controlling our own substance here in our own city as opposed of having someone on the outside coming to tell us what to do and how to do it. But my questions are on this, I wanted to know, what's the maximum number of establishments, for one, and where in the cities, if we decide to do this, are they going to be growing this? But I also have a suggestion, and I brought it up to county supervisors last week when I went to the library, their meeting, and I brought up, because you're talking about being able to control who, instead of having, in other words, instead of having dispensaries, because they're going to be, I think, in a way, my people thinking is, it's going to be hard to control. But I thought, and I brought it up, like I said, to supervisors, have it go through the clinic pharmacies, go through the public pharmacies like CVS, Walgreens, those type of things, where it can be controlled a lot easier and a lot better, I think, anyway. Also, if, I don't approve the recreation cannabis, because if they're going to be smoking it out in public, our kids are going to, we're going to smell it, we're going to have, we're going to be indirect, where am I, what's it, we're going to be affected indirectly, like, just like cigarettes. You know, we're going to be subjugated, taking in the smoke, insulation of the smoke. So I don't know, but that's what I have to say.
Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that once Proposition 64 passed, that there is nothing this council can do to keep people from walking down the street smoking this stuff. Is that right?
That is not true. On public streets, we can prohibit smoking of cannabis. We cannot prohibit it on private property. We can prohibit it in public spaces, we can prohibit it on public streets and the sidewalks, but not in private, on private property, but...
So, none of you people can smoke in here? Anymore? All right, but in answer to your question, in restaurants, they can do it, if the restaurant lets them, or is the smoking ordinance keep it out?
We, as our current smoking ordinance, our current ordinance is written, it prohibits medical cannabis smoking in restaurants, so it needs to be updated. In the wake of 64, and that's coming back to you.
January 2018, can people grow this in their front yard if they want?
Outdoor can be prohibited... Outdoor can be prohibited, if we choose, if we choose to do that, that's one of the things we'll be bringing back to you. Indoor, we can impose reasonable regulations, but we cannot prohibit it.
So, who defines reasonable? I mean, we all know how reasonable I can be.
Ultimately, what is reasonable will be likely determined by the courts.
Okay.
But regulations, you know, requiring it to be in an area not accessible by children are the types of things that folks are expecting to be in those regulations and are, in the legislative intent is what it looks like it's going to be.
Two days ago, I heard that LA County has opened an Office of Marijuana Control, is that right?
I'm going to let Mr. Bosigian take that one.
The Office of Marijuana Management and something or other, yes.
And what is the purpose of that office?
That's a tough question. There will be more people hired, but...
Did you say hire or hired?
Hire would have been funnier, but I meant employed, yes. I think, no offense to the county, but they tend to hire and create organizations around issues. So probably a single-purpose entity to manage all aspects of it, which, based at least on what we've read in the paper and what's been reported from the meetings, they're on their way to allowing some level of cultivation, dispensary, something along those lines.
And that would be in the county area, like Quartz Hill, Little Rock?
Yeah, anything that's not incorporated in the Antelope Valley would be Palmdale, Lancaster, anything outside those municipal boundaries.
Okay. Has Palmdale indicated that they're not going to allow it?
No, they're in the process, their staff recommended a committee of 20-some, their council decided on somewhere between more than that and five, and they're bringing it back in March 1st, or March, I think March 1st, to decide.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have any other questions, Fran?
No, I said, thank you very much.
Katie Bowden?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Katie Bowden, I'm an attorney with Seal &amp; Law Firm. And first, I would just like to say that I'm an outsider to the city. I've just recently become, have come to planning commission meetings and city council meetings. And I want to say that the first thing that strikes me about Lancaster is that it truly is a city of compassion and love, and I can see it and I feel it in these meetings every time I come. I saw with the memorial services, excuse me, for Sergeant Owens, and I read about Lancaster City High Schoolers raising enough funds for Gerald. And I just want to thank you for examining this tonight and being compassionate towards others. Now, on another note, I do want to clarify some of the laws that were raised about Prop 64 and LA County, the marijuana program. First, with Prop 64, there's no smoking in public places that is required, that's already a regulation in place set by state law. You cannot smoke in a public place, and the only private place is a private residence or a licensed facility. So that means that it would have to be a smoking club that is specifically licensed by the state, and granted so long that it is also allowed in the city. Now, that's not going to be happening in Lancaster, we know, because there won't be recreational, let alone a recreational smoking club. Additionally, LA County has created a marijuana management division of LA County to examine and develop medical marijuana laws. They are studying very closely, and they wanted to create a comprehensive regulatory scheme that also is inclusive of the cities that are passing marijuana regulations. And I want to say that my background is, as a deputy city attorney, I've read almost every single ordinance that city and counties have passed on medical marijuana laws, and I want to say that I assure you that the ordinance that you have before you tonight is one of the most highly regulatory, or regulated, comprehensive schemes that I've seen any city consider. And I just want to thank you for really taking the time to study it and develop something that will absolutely prevent diversion, but still provide people their medicine in a compassionate way. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody just said Y, letter Y. They still here? Miguel Aldens?
Oh, yes. Probably on there, Yolanda.
Yolanda, you didn't finish.
I was filling out my...
Okay, Yolanda, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, and city council and city members. My name is Yolanda Aldas, and I do apologize for that, I was busy filling out another card as well.
Well, you just have a new name, isn't it?
A new name, why, Yoli. I'm here both as an advocate and as a patient. Several years ago, at the age of 23, while I was in college, I started to become very, very ill. I didn't know why, I kept going to the doctor, nothing was coming about it, no tests, no nothing. I started to miss more and more school, I started to miss more and more work, and I didn't know why. Finally, I found a doctor on campus at Cal State Northridge, who did a severe, several tests, a huge panel. And three days later, I get a phone call telling me that I was diagnosed with lupus. At that time, I thought I was going to die. 23, you don't know what's going on. You know that you're losing work, you know that you're constantly in pain, you're constantly fatigued, you're constantly in pain where you feel like your ribs are breaking. You can't, you don't have a quality of life when you become ill. All I know is that I was finally directed over to Olive View Hospital, where in a matter of eight months, I was already on four different types of medication. By the fifth one, the fifth one was Zoloft for depression, because by that time, I had to drop out of semester from school. Being a god, a child of God, and the kind of parents they taught me that drugs were bad, and with that, I would never try any bad drug, or anything that would lead me to a bad life. One day, someone told me that maybe trying cannabis would be my answer. I feared it so much, and I prayed to God to give me the strength and the will to make a determination, because I had tried everything under the sun, acupuncture, meditation, Chinese herbal medications. I was even taken by my mother, who taught me not to take drugs, to Mexico, to see if anything would help. In a period of about four months, I start after trying it, because I did ask for the strength to try something that was so bad and had such a terrible stigma to it, everybody thinking that I was going to become a drug addict. I decided to try it, and in those four months, I was able to apply back to college, and I successfully graduated, where I became an educator. I'm now a parent, a proud parent of a four-year-old and an 11-month-old. And my husband during that transition, who was my boyfriend and then fiance, knew the pain that I was going through, the sleepless nights. And without this cannabis, I don't think I would have the quality of life and the strength to be the person that I am today. For that, I ask everybody in the audience to really deep dig in their hearts and realize that this is medication. Thank you.
Thank you. David Wallen?
I am a medical cannabis user. I am also a two-time cancer survivor. I, like many people, was a student in school, growing up the right way, taught to live life, appreciate your family and friends. Then comes cancer, which changes your life in an instant. And I don't think people realize the effect cancer has, it's just not the day you have surgery, it's not just the day that you leave the hospital, but it's the next day, in the next month, in the next month, until you probably pass. And there's a misconception about marijuana here, when we start talking about other types of drugs that I was prescribed. And I've said this before to somebody, that the gateway drug to me wasn't marijuana, it was Darvocet that led to Norco, that led to Vicodin, that, wait a minute, we have something stronger, we'll put you on Perkadine. Percocet, because I've had groin pain, I've had 11 surgeries for cancer-related stuff. You find a point, and I can't stress this enough, where you can't, and I wrote this down, it comes to a point where your body and mind can't function with or without the pills. Now, let me repeat that, your body and mind can't function on these types of medications, from Xanax to Vicodin, and have an active life. Marijuana, cannabis, when I need to use it, I use it, when I don't need to use it, I don't. In order to get off Xanax, I had to go to a hospital, I had to be medically detoxed. I don't think anybody really understands what medically detox means. They didn't want me to have seizures, I was at risk for death. So you're talking about things that are actively out there that everybody approves of. I sat there with my parents, with my oncologist, we went down a list of what I took every month. It wasn't that I was buying it on the streets. So what did end up working was medical cannabis. What I found is that I became myself again. I could sit in front of you guys, in front of anybody, and act at my peak performance. When you're a person who's 28 years old, and you've got the most active lifestyle, you're employed, you're making wonderful decisions, and then your life changes on dime, and then for the next six or seven years, you spiral down because you're trying to recover. And it's, you know, and what got me out of that spiral, ironically, was cannabis. I was able to medicate, take care of myself, be out of discomfort and pain, and found myself living my life again. I had my family, my friends again, I was a nephew, yeah, nephews and nieces who I didn't want to be around because they didn't know who I was. The other thing I want to stress is that everybody refers to this as a flower, as something that's cultivated and grown. This is something that's not just going to be made as a flower that you smoke. This will be, can be a pill, it can be a spray form, it can be a lotion. There's so many other uses to this by research and development, that they've extracted so many quality, and that's when you see a Charlotte's Web, I mean, look at this little girl. You're not, she's not smoking a psychoactive, she's not taking anything that's affecting her brain, it's affecting her body. And that can't be stressed enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. David Beerman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Looked like one of the expert witnesses in my trial.
I have been an expert witness at many trials, and this is a much friendlier forum. Not, I doubt whether I'll be cross-examined. I've been involved in providing drug abuse treatment and prevention for over 49 years. This fall, it'll be 50 years. Most of it on a part-time basis. I have worked at every level of government, federal government, state government, county government, local government. I've been in elective office for most of the last 30 years, the best elective office possible, the sanitary district. I also make recommendations for the medical use of cannabis, and there's an awful lot of misunderstanding here. I'm working on a book for doctors, going into the science, and there's an enormous amount of science, there have been 25,000 studies in the last 20 years on cannabis, cannabinoids, and the endocannabinoid system. The reason that cannabis works is we have neural receptors, we have our own marijuana-like substance that we make, and these studies, the studies have been done all over. Human studies have been relatively few. The University of California at San Diego is the headquarters for the California Medicinal Cannabis Research Center. They were set up in 2000, the state legislature allocated $9 million. In 2011, they issued a report to the state legislature and the people of the state of California on the 18 FDA-approved smoked cannabis clinical studies done at four medical schools here in the state of California. At least five of those studies had to do with analgesia. We know in the states where medicinal cannabis is legal, that there's been a 25% decline in overdose deaths due to opiates compared to those states where it's illegal. The number one reason...
Wait a minute, say that again.
Say what?
Say that again. Say that again.
There was an article in the Journal of the American Medical Association about a year and a half ago, that showed that in states where medical marijuana was legal, there was a 25% decline in opiate overdose deaths compared to those states where cannabis was illegal.
So that would be Colorado?
What was that?
Colorado deaths actually went down?
Yes, yeah, overdose deaths went down due to opiates, because what, the...
Give them 30 more seconds, I took 30, okay?
But those of us in cannabinoid medicine have found, I'm one, I'm the executive vice president of the American Academy of Cannabidioid Medicine. One of our goals is to marginalize those doctors who are practicing minimalist medicine. We take this very seriously. We think it's important to educate the general public and to educate physicians. I've given presentations, I testified before the Wisconsin State Senate Health Committee, before the Maryland Combined Judicial and Health Committee, by Skype, before the Ohio Marijuana Commission, and all of these, except Wisconsin, which happens to be where I'm from, came up with very good laws. I do think that what, you're starting on a journey here that's important, and I think that you need to consider at some time in the future. I know you don't want to know.
Now I'm cheating, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer you a copy of my book. This is the Shameless Commerce Division, if you don't mind, I'll come up and give it to you.
Actually, if you could just hand it to the city manager, okay?
And there's only one condition.
What?
I want you to read it.
I will.
And I thank you very much for giving me three minutes and 48 seconds.
Well, I got some questions, too.
Sure.
I want somebody to get on the internet and check that Colorado thing. All right. I want somebody to check out the statistics in Colorado for whether or not deaths have come down from drug overdoses. Are we checking the right thing?
It's a national study that was appeared in the Journal of the American Medical Association.
Okay, so go to the AMA, Jason, and...
I'll gladly send them the site, I mean, you can find it yourself, but it's out there.
I just, one of the things I've been hearing for two weeks is that the opposite was true, that's why I want to look into that.
Well, that's why, that's why I think there'll be a big audience for my book, because there's so much misinformation out there, and that every commission...
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'll shut up.
No, you can only answer my questions, otherwise you're breaking the time rule. What was the other question I had? You know, it's really difficult being 65.
I'm older than 65, so I really empathize with you.
Oh, I know what it was. I'm curious, you know, why isn't Pfizer, why isn't Amgen selling this stuff? And it occurred to me the other day that they can't charge $1,000 a pill for something that's openly on the market. Has there been any research in regards to that?
Actually, there's a company, which, full disclosure, I own some stock in, called GW Pharmaceuticals, which has been doing research on tincture cannabis since 1999. Their product is legal in Canada, and it's legal in the European Union, it's, you're able to prescribe it in 24 countries in the world, the United States is not one of them. There was a successful Phase III trial, completed six years ago in upstate New York, that showed the benefits of tincture of cannabis. I mean, if you look at the Sanjay Gupta documentary, you'll see them making it there, they take the flowering tops, you put it in alcohol, you leave it there for a specified period of time, you strain off the plant material, and they put it into a metered sprayer, because, you know, they want to limit the possibility of abuse. And there are people who have intractable pain that have benefited from this tincture of cannabis product. Frankly, I'm not sure why it hasn't been approved in the U.S. Since I own stock in the company, I hope that it is, but also because I'm a physician, and people have talked about the need for standardization. Physicians have been talking about the need to standardize cannabis since at least 1937, when the AMA testified against the Marijuana Tax Act, and in that testimony said they knew of no danger from the medical use of cannabis, and at that point in time, it had been in the United States pharmacopeia since 1850.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And Miguel Aldas? Thank you.
This is Alvin's.
Okay, you got the article? Just verify it.
It's 24, 24.8% of opiate overdoses. But it also says, it says it's gone 24.8% lower for the opiate overdoses, but traffic has gone up 154%.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor, and council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Hello, my name is Miguel Aldas. I'm the head cultivator at DC Collective. I'm here to basically explain to you that it is possible to actually have a cannabis cultivation facility that's professionally ran and operated, which we operate in the San Fernando Valley. I've been truly blessed with the opportunity to provide many patients with true, high-quality, affordable, pesticide-free, chemical-free, PGR-free medicinal cannabis. And I call it medicinal cannabis because that's exactly what it is. It's medicine. And us as cultivators, that's how we treat it. At DC Farms, we realize the need for the quality control and regulations in the cannabis industry. Therefore, we adhere to strict and high cultivation standards in our own facility. Through our strict integrated pest management system, which includes natural methods of pest and fungus control, we're able to maintain a clean and pest-free cultivation facility. Having a clean cultivation facility is a critical part in producing quality product. We use a high-quality-based nutrient system with no added PGRs and zero impurities. PGRs, for those that don't know, stands for plant growth regulators. These plant growth regulators have been known to cause cancer, so which is why we emphasize zero impurities, zero chemicals, and not only that, but we also test all our products to make sure that it's always of consistent and appropriate quality. In addition, as a cannabis cultivation facility model, we've also been selected to participate in California's first seed-to-sale tagging system trial from the same company that operates Colorado's seed-to-sale system, which is METRIC. In participating, we were able to tag every single plant in our facility, and we're able to track any plant and its location with the use of computer web-based software and actually RFID technology. In having a track-and-trace regulatory in place, any potential harmful product for any reason could always be recalled and traced back to the batch number and the plant. In addition, product and plants are able to be tracked from seed to sale, ensuring there's no diversion that's taking place, and everything is accounted for properly. The operating of a cannabis cultivation facility is not an easy task. It takes a lot of endless amount of hard work, dedication, knowledge, and human power to build, secure, operate, and successfully produce quality product. Once again, at DC Farms, we understand that we are not just growing cannabis, we're growing medicine, that's how we treat it. As a previous educator of 10 years with a master's in education, I know the responsibility it takes to teach one's children. I now have the same responsibility, and I take that responsibility, in providing the best quality product cannabis that I can right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Where have you been?
Charlotte, Grisberg.
I think about you often.
We've known each other an awful long time, sir. Thank you, thank you. Mayor, council, I thank you for this opportunity. Am I the first opposed? Okay, good. I am Ron Shreves, retired lieutenant, LA County Sheriff's Department. I retired from there 14 years ago. Most of my career was right here in the city of Lancaster by a wide margin. I too love this city. I also am in my 29th year teaching administration of justice courses at Antelope Valley College. And one of those courses is entitled Police and Society. Not by happen chance, their term project this semester is legalization of marijuana. It's about the third time I've used that term project in the last five years, third semester. And what I know is that they are going to have a great deal more ease in finding quantitative and qualitative information against the use of marijuana, even in a medical sense, than they are finding it for. I'm a little surprised we've only heard those kinds of studies here tonight. I hope the opposite studies have been made available to you guys, too, and you've been able to overlook those. But in that light, I'd like to just bring up, just the tip of the iceberg, is some of those studies from credible institutions that I think are worth considering. The first is from the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration. Their take on marijuana is that it is properly categorized under Section 1 of the Controlled Substances Act, and the clear way to the currently available evidence support this. The classification, including evidence that smoked marijuana has a high potential, smoked marijuana has a high potential for abuse, has no accepted medicinal value in treatment in the United States, still talking about smoked marijuana, and evidence that there is a general lack of exception safety for its use, even under medical supervision. Now, the DEA also supports ongoing research into potential medical uses of marijuana as active ingredients. Who agrees with the DEA? These people, the Food and Drug Administration, the United States Supreme Court, the International Narcotics Control Board, the American Medical Association, the American Society of Addictive Medicines, the American Cancer Society, the American Glaucoma Society, the American Academy of Pediatrics, National Multiple Sclerosis Society, whoa, and the British Medical Association. It goes on. If I could just say, here's one more I'd like to get in before I leave. Researchers find that daily smoking of relatively small amounts of marijuana, three to four joints, has at least a comparable, if not greater, effect on respiratory systems than a smoking more than 20 tobacco cigarettes.
Three to four joints a day?
Well, yeah. And 20 cigarettes a day also, you know, but three or four joints more than 20 cigarettes.
I mean, that just seems like a lot.
It does, it does.
I don't think there's any question. We're going to have more automobile accidents, we're going to have more law enforcement problems, no question about that. But we're going to have that regardless of what I do here today or what the council members do here today. Would you agree with that?
Your honor, probably I would, but here's what I know about you. You've gone against the status quo many times, under great scrutiny and criticism. You're a law and order guy, and you fought for what's right or wrong. I would just like this city council to take that approach if you find this to be the wrong thing to do. And I'm hoping you look at both sides of the medical evidence before you make your decision.
The biggest concern I have, and I've been asked, don't talk about the money, you know, don't talk about the money. The truth of it is, is how do I pay for the added law enforcement? How do I pay for the added problems that are coming my way? Meaning our way. It is coming. There is nothing we can do about it. I didn't vote for it. I didn't ask anyone else to vote for it. But I'm a little bit concerned that I didn't hear anybody else asking people not to vote for it that are in this room. We were totally deaf to it, we were totally blind to it, we just let it happen. And now you go, council, here it is. Here's this mess for you to deal with. And there's no money to deal with it. We tried to pass an initiative to take care of the homeless, and this is going to increase the homeless. What happened? We got killed at the polls. I don't know how to pay for what's coming. I'm going to pay for it with this. It's the only solution anybody has offered us. What the staff tells me is it's $10 million or more a year in fees and taxes if we allow them to do medical marijuana. Somebody stand up and tell me where I'm going to get the money if I don't do it. It's, I mean, it's you we are protecting. I mean, do you disagree with that?
I don't. But tongue-in-cheek, Mike Cooper works for a dollar a year, my uniform still fits, sir.
Listen, if I could do that, if I could, actually, I'm actually working on a plan to increase the reserve--
There you go.
--rapid-response deal, but that's another story. The other side will beat me up for that--
I know.
--next week. All right, thanks.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Chris, Pastor Johnson?
You can call me Chris. You're my friend.
Are we still friends?
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
Some people were saying we weren't, I was worried about it.
Should have just asked me. I love you, I love you, I do. And I love each of you on this council, and you're all my friends. And I'm going to be challenged with the three minutes because I want to answer some of your questions, so--
One more time?
--I'm going to read my statement, and I'm going to try to answer your questions.
Can we give him more time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mayor Paris and city council members, Chris, Molly Underwood Jacobs, and obviously Ken Mann as well. My name's Chris Johnson, and I am the senior pastor at Grace Chapel. I've lived in this valley for 26 years. I also have the privilege of serving as the president of the Antelope Valley Ministerial Alliance. And I really do want to thank you for your public service. I really recognize the hard work that you do. I also want to express my appreciation to each of you for meeting with me individually, and I deeply do appreciate that. I am concerned that this monumental decision regarding commercial cultivation of marijuana will have a detrimental effect on our city. And I really believe that from the bottom of my heart. And I think you love the city, and I think you know that I do, too, and those that I represent. It is not unfamiliar, it is unfamiliar for me, and it's a unique position that I didn't envy or want to stand up and oppose something that the city staff was supporting, because I love each of you, too, and have great friendships with you, and I appreciate what you do as well. However, after careful investigation and much deliberation with city leadership, it's clear to me that the licensing of growing commercial marijuana would be potentially--
Chris, you can slow down, you've got more time.
Okay, they voted, okay. I will slow down, then. That it would have a potential catastrophic, what's that?
That's the word he preaches to you.
That's how I preach, too. Thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, wow, thank you. I'll keep that in mind. I've got a lot to say. They put a timer on me at church, too, so that's why I have to go fast. I have consistently been supportive of this city government, and it is, this is the first time I've ever stood in opposition to something that you were proposing. I am thankful for your innovation, and I would agree with what Ron just said. You guys are always on the front end. I love the streetlight deal, I love all of those ideas, the solar things. But in this case, I think the risk is just too great, which for me moves from taking a risk to being reckless. There are no longitudinal studies of the personal effects of the use of marijuana, and I appreciate Dennis Anderson, and he's a beloved friend of mine, too, and I love the work he does for our veterans. And I've worked with him on that and supported that, and we host that at our church, the Stand Down, we host at our church, and we have dentists come in and pull teeth, and people cut hair. So we're a part of all of those things, but the reality is there are no longitudinal studies also regarding the indoor commercial growth facilities in the community, how that would impact our community, we really don't know. This is like the wild, wild west. And at this point, we can only rely on early reports from Colorado, which are alarming, you just referenced them, an increase in homelessness, crime, traffic accidents. And really, what this is, in my opinion, is this is creating Lancaster kind of as a social laboratory, and I just don't think this is a good thing to experiment on. I think you have to have more information, more studies. And really, Mayor, I mean, I feel like calling you a exonerator, I'm just going to call you mayor in this setting because I respect you and I respect your office. The reality of it is, is you're not a man that relies on anecdotal information to make decisions. You always ask for science. And Mark, you said the science supports it, but the reality is the scientific studies aren't there, which is why this last summer, the FDA did not, under the Obama administration, the liberal administration, did not approve marijuana, you know, as taking off as a Schedule I drug. Because they decided, Rosenberg decided, there just is not the studies to support that. They would like to do those studies. I would like them to do those studies because I think it's very possible that this could be an excellent pain reliever for people that is managed, if it's managed properly. And so, a number of years ago, and I think this is important to state, I was on the Criminal Justice Commission at your request, which I was honored to serve for two years on that. And we went through this issue, and in fact, Marv, you and I were on that together. And we had many, many people come and give testimony as to why they were in favor of it. We did studies, we contacted other cities, so this is not a new issue for me. Like, we've researched this, thought this through, and the reality is, it's still a Schedule I drug, it still is against federal law. And so I really do believe in the rule of law, and I think it is sloppy how states are doing this, I think it's sloppy how the state of California is doing it. And I actually feel for you. I do think you've been put in a horrible position as city leadership. And it's not your fault, the state has thrust this upon you. However, I also must mention, it is possible for you not only to prohibit the sale of marijuana, medical or otherwise, or recreational, you can also prohibit the distribution of it, but you're also legally, you do have to take action, I agree with you, you do need to take action, actually, there's a deadline to do that by. And you have to take that action, you could also prohibit the cultivation of it as well. That is a real possibility, and I've confirmed that with Mark. Turlock has a city ordinance they just passed doing just that. I have it with me, if anybody would like to see it. I want to mention for a minute just the issue of compassion, because I feel deep, deep compassion, and there's a part of this that I feel incredibly uncomfortable for, because I feel like I'm being put on the other side, like we're the non-compassionate group. And what I would say to you is that's just not the truth. And Jerrel Hancock is absolutely, which is why I gave him standing ovation, he is an American hero who should be honored and has been honored in this city, and should continue to be honored in this city. And I'm glad that everybody stood in applause regardless of someone's views on these things. And so this is not an issue in my mind of compassion, but I do believe this, that the improper implementation of a drug policy will create more suffering in the city than it will alleviate, which are traffic accidents. And the truth is, you have a much tougher job than any of us do, because we can stand and talk about it, but you are responsible for the decision. And I'm just afraid that there's going to be consequences to this that I don't think any of you are going to like or would be happy about. So we are compassionate. What has become clear to me, and I'm glad that you mentioned it, is that this, at the end of the day, is a money issue. And that's not always wrong. It's not always wrong to ask the question. You ask the question, how much are we going to save on the streetlights? That's an excellent question, and it's, that's a lot of money. I was already doing the math in my head, that's thousands of dollars every month. And I think that's brilliant. And so it's not wrong, because we have to be wise with our resources, we have limited resources, and we have great needs. However, in this case, I think what we have to do is be people of faith. Psalm 127 says this, unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stands awake in vain. And Pastor Chapel referenced in God We Trust, and I had that in my notes as well. Jesus said, what is it profit of man if he gains the whole world and loses his soul? There's nothing wrong with having money, but there's something wrong when the money has us. And so I don't think that, at the end of the day, that the money that would come in outweighs the risk that exists. I wanted to answer just a few of your questions, and I'll take any of the questions, too, but I did take note. You asked the question, 54% of those in the valley, or in our area, voted for this. My answer to that is, is we actually don't live in a democracy. We don't live in a direct democracy. We don't vote on every single issue. We live in a representative government, and we elected you--
They've been accusing me of that.
Yes. Yeah, well, yeah. No comment. A few times tonight, though, and I do appreciate this about you, you have ownership. You do. And so several times tonight, you've said, I, I have this problem, I have this problem. And then you correct yourself, well, we do, well, we do. And I realize that could become a criticism against you, the "I" statements. I see it as, you just own it. Like, you love it, you own it, you're pouring your life into this. And let's be honest, everybody in this room knows, you don't have to be doing this when you're 65 years old if you didn't want to. Like, there's, you know, you're not making a ton of money doing this, and you didn't need it anyhow. But you're just owning it, and that is your heart. It is. And I feel like I know you, and I feel like I know Marv very well, and I'm getting to know both of you well, and I appreciate you both. However, the argument that 50-some percent of people in this area voted for something, that isn't what you rely on. And you yourself said tonight, Mr. Mayor, I don't care how many people out here applaud, I don't care what's most popular, I don't care, which I applaud that. So what I'm saying to you is, that statistic doesn't matter to me at all.
Okay, you got me there.
Okay. Number two, then, you asked three good questions. Why keep it out? Keep it away from our citizens, which I'm an advocate for because it's not perfectly radical. So we're going to grow it and then disperse it to other areas?
No, 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 Chris, that's not fair, and you know it.
Oh, no, no, okay, I'm not trying to be unfair.
We're not growing anything. What we're doing is taxing the businesses that do grow it. And you and I both know that a year ago, that was a, George Runner and I have been exchanging heated emails-- and I have been exchanging heated emails all day long. And we're close friends, but we've been exchanging heated emails over this.
Yeah.
And that was his position a year and a half ago, is that the state should tax this to pay for the damage it's causing the state. And he will own that.
Yeah, but I respectfully disagree, because I've had that conversation with him.
Did you read the opinion?
I did. I read his, I read his articles. I saw the news coverage on it. I've talked with him about it just a week ago.
But he posed the question in the opinion piece I read, "Who should be required to pay for this? The people who are using it or the rest of us?"
Right.
This is the only way I know that the people who are using it will have to pay for the added cost.
Yes.
Now, I understand the argument that, do we really want to do that? I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
But I do know this, I'm not gonna let them turn the clock back. I'm not going to be the most crime-infested city in the county again. I'm not going to have 24 murders the first year I was elected. And we drove it down to two. I mean, no, I'm sorry, we drove it down to zero in two years. I'm not going back.
We don't want to go back.
Then somebody show me where the money is to fix this.
It's right behind you, the second word.
God helps those...
Don't clap. Don't clap. Don't clap. It's not, it's not, it's not clapping.
Trust me, my wife and I have prayed about this for hours and hours. And we've talked to Pastor Chapel about it for hours and hours.
And we've talked.
And God helps those who help themselves.
It's not in the Bible, but, but I would say this though.
It's not?
It's not. Sorry. It's not.
Why didn't you tell me it wasn't in the Bible?
It's Carol's fault. Listen, I'm not trying to, I just want you to know, here's, here's what I really believe. God has honored this city. You've made hard decisions, things that really, on the surface, don't make sense, including that fight that you put up. And I agree with Ron Schreese. What I'm saying to you is, is why don't we do this a different way? Why don't we join together and start to fight the state? Start to fight for the federal government? Let's fight for this fine gentleman who's a veteran in this wheelchair tonight, to get him the medicine that he would need, and in a proper way. And so, I'm all about, let's fight for that. I'll fight with you for that. But what I would tell you is, and no evidence was presented tonight with the other side of statistics. Statistics are showing that actually it's increasing crime. And so, I would say to you, I'm on your side. I am incredibly concerned about the crime rate. I am. And we've had this conversation for, and we fight that together in many ways, grassroots ways, in our neighborhoods. So, I'm with you on that fight. I just really sincerely believe, I don't think enough research even has been done. I think it could increase crime. And I am in no way wanting to prohibit people from having what they need or a lack of compassion. So, that's honestly, I think, and I have tons of, I mean, I've just, I've read so much about marijuana, I can't even believe it. But it wasn't the first time that I did it. I read about marijuana when I was on the criminal. There's the third question. And you said, "How can we deny this to these people who are here tonight?" And I appreciate the emotional pleas. And I honestly, I'm sitting here listening, you know, and I do everything I possibly can do, along with the churches that are represented here and others who don't even go to church, to alleviate pain and suffering. What I'm concerned about is, is we're gonna create more pain and suffering than we alleviate. And I'll tell you this, nothing in this ordinance actually provides medical marijuana to anyone in this community. And what I'm saying is, suggesting, is that we actually come up with an ordinance to prohibit it, to keep it out entirely, to keep the growth of it out, to protect our city that way. And then, we can go ahead and join a fight with others to say, "Let's figure out how to get these veterans and these people, but let's make sure the studies get done and let's fight for that." And I will, I can appeal to you as a fighter, as a man of justice. I am concerned about the rule of law. I am. And the reality is, this is against, this is against federal law, which is why you're in such a mess here. Because it's not been taken off as a Schedule I drug. So, I hopefully have answered your questions. I'm happy any others. But I tried to honestly answer the questions you had asked earlier before break.
I love you, Chris.
I love you too. I do. Bless you. Thank you all.
Hey, good evening, City Council. It's good to be here. I'm Rob Dietzel. I oversee our Neighborhood Impact Ministry here in the valley. We have eight homes in the most at-risk neighborhoods. And I really feel that I'm in the, I'm in the ground. I'm in the trenches.
Before he goes on, I want, I want to tell you who he is. His program is absolut... His program is absolutely the finest thing I've seen in this city. It was started before I became mayor. It was started by Chris and Henry. It has grown. The, if I could fund more of them, I would. Nothing has had as big of an impact as the Neighborhood Impact Homes. And you, I want you to know, regardless of what you're about to say, you are one of my heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We wouldn't be able to have the Neighborhood Impact Homes without the city. And just going in there and painting homes and loving our neighbors and watching the crime rate drop was just icing on the cake. Seeing people's lives changed is what's been most amazing. One of the hard things we see though, is just the effect of drugs in our neighborhoods, whether it's the medical marijuana card, where they receive their marijuana and then they just sell it to their neighbors. We see it there. We see it all the time. And part of my job, I still have the best job in the world, is working with these children and just, and kind of helping them put their lives back together, so to speak. You see the effects of drugs in their home and their older brothers or sisters and aunts and uncles. And it's hard. It's hard for the lives that they, that they have because of drugs in our neighborhoods. And I just wouldn't want to do anything that would just add to that. I know there's the regulations and the rules, it can't be out in the public, but I know the smell of it now. I didn't know it smelled like a skunk until being in the neighborhoods and people walking by and people, the kids telling me what that was. I had no idea. And I know we have rules and I wish those rules maybe could be enforced a little better, but I actually see what goes on in those neighborhoods and it's painful. And I know you guys love this city. There's not a doubt in my mind that you love this city. You want to do what's best for this city and for our citizens here and for these kids that are gonna be the next generation here. And I just want to encourage you just to do what you've been doing, and that's loving our city and making choices that are the best choices for this city. I appreciate you guys so much and so much to be grateful for. And I love you tremendously as well. And I hope that, that God will be honored. And regardless of what happens, we're gonna be in those neighborhoods or we're gonna be loving those families and trying to change lives as we point them to the Savior. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and all the staff and all of you that are here. There are several cities in the United States by the name of Lancaster, but there's only one Lancaster that I know that has another attachment that goes with it, and that is a Christian city. And that's the city of Lancaster. You paid a dear price for that. And the Lord blessed us to kind of start that when we were here, prayer meetings at the City Council and all the other things. We just know that God's got us covered. And then later on, you come up with, by the way, Pastor Chapel and Pastor Johnson gave you statistics. I'm gonna talk about the morality of it all. That statement up there is bigger than it looks. It's heavier than steel. It cannot be erased. And when we say a Christian city, it's a different standard than a city that doesn't care what God thinks. So, I want you to know that what we have to do is to stand up for what we know that God can say, "Amen to." So, I want you to know that there's only one city that I know of with a mayor who made that statement publicly and knew you were gonna get your bridge to a...
Not as much as I did.
But you did it. And we are so thankful for that. I sat there at that desk 18 years. And I had an opportunity to serve the City Council, eight or 10 years as Vice Mayor, and then two terms as Mayor of the city. And I went through some turbulent time. I had a guy who called in and says, "I'm going to kill you before the sun go down." And I thought, "Wow, I oughta go and let somebody know." And the Holy Spirit spoke to me and says, "I got you covered." And when I heard that, I didn't tell anybody. I said to the young man that was on the phone, I said, "Sir, when the sun go down..."
He's a bishop.
"When the sun go down today, I'll still be praying for you and I'll still be living. And I want you to know, sir, I love you." And that was many years ago. And I'm still here. In a couple of months, I'll be 84. And I'm so thankful for that. Let me just mention a couple of other things. Remember, we're held on a different standard, just because we made a declaration that we are a Christian city. And nobody else is held to that responsibility except you all up there. And the other thing I wanted to make mention to you, this brother here, I don't know how I could love him anymore if he was my own biological DNA, sir. I really don't. I love him very much, highly respect you. And I want you to know that however you vote tonight, I'll still be loving you. Ain't no question about that. And that's for all of you. I want you to know that. And that'd be the same with these pastors that are here tonight. Probably 10 or 12 of them are here. And we ain't gonna stop loving because we are commanded to love. That's our standard. Let me just mention this. Today, I talked to my granddaughter. And she's in school that, she'll be graduating with her PhD in May this year. And she needed some money. And I sent her, I didn't add no argument, I gave her the money. She said, "Grandpa, how could you do this?" I said, "Because we are in this together. We are partners. You're doing the study, I finish the money." Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, and ladies who, and gentlemen who are the judges here, that you all, we're in this together. Makes no difference what happens. And here's a question I'd like to leave on your heart. Nine years ago, I stepped out of that seat. And I asked myself the question, "What did I leave behind? What did I do was worth 18 years of my life?" And I'm still touching people across this city who walks up and say, "Thank you for what you did." That's what I want you to think about when you touch that button tonight. What are you going to leave that people are gonna remember you by? Not because you voted yes, and not because you voted no, but because you made a decision that helped our community and every child, every grandchild, and even those who will come after I'm gone and after you're gone, can say, "I lived in a city that was a Christian city." Not because it said it was a city, but because the behavior of the mayor, behavior of the council members was that of a Christian city. Well, you talked about money, and I shut up with this. I left nine years ago. And I left $13 million in the kitty. All bills paid and $13 million left to do something else with. Didn't have no marijuana to get money from. We just trusted in God. We trust. Thank you.
I forgot, did you have any questions? One, one. Now, you and I and a couple other pastors were at a breakfast, right? And at that breakfast, my memory is that you all asked me to move this meeting to two weeks to today's date. Is that right?
No. Further back than that.
We did ask you to move it. I grant you that.
I'm not Valentine's Day.
Well, none of, none of us knew it was Valentine's Day.
I'm right this year and you can't pin this on me.
Folks, I am not, I am not taking the rap for Valentine's Day. This was scheduled two weeks ago. You all wanted to have time to get your, get your troops together, or what, you know, and I said, "Fine, I think everybody should have a voice." And I seem to remember, we agreed on today's date, but none of us knew it was Valentine's Day.
I don't...
You got pulled off the other agenda.
We actually pulled it from last month because Ron was...
It must be last month.
Oh, is that what happened?
I'm not going to get Valentine's Day. That's all I'm saying.
I just want all the ladies in this room to know that I did not schedule this for Valentine's Day deliberately. I didn't. Now, you guys, I don't care what you think.
But let me, let me just say this, Mr. Mayor. We did ask you to move it. I don't know, I don't remember the exact time for that. But what I do want to say to you is, Valentine Day or not, you made a decision that you'd be here until we're done talking. And I want you to know that. I appreciate that, you all. But just remember, someday or the other, all this building and everything else, you got me into a sermon here, but...
I noticed that.
But, but someday, all of this is gonna be gone. But what we leave in the hearts of those younger people who are coming behind us, you can't buy it with money.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you so much.
It is, it is 8:10. I'm 65. And all the gentlemen here who are 65 will understand, we have to take another break. Okay, you ready? Hey, folks. You know, this is starting to look like a desert Christian fundraiser. Okay, let's go. Back in session. If we stay on the clock, we'll be done in an hour. I'll clap for that.
All right, let's go.
I'm John Meadows. I'm pastor at Christian Life Assembly. And I want to thank this council for all your work to improve the quality of life in our city. I've lived here for 10 years and I've enjoyed watching and participating in all that you've done for our city in many different ways. When I listen to all the arguments tonight, what it seems to boil down to me is that you want to keep the quality of life in this city that you worked so hard to maintain. And the only way you see to do that is through money. And the only way you can raise that money is through licensing medical marijuana, growing of marijuana for medical purposes. for medical purposes. It doesn't seem like it's about the medical part of that, because there'll be plenty of places in California to grow medical marijuana. We don't have to do it to provide that for our communities. It doesn't seem like it's about regulation, because it seems like we can regulate marijuana to a certain degree without having growing centers in the city. It seems to be that we want the money to be able to maintain the quality of life that we have. And the concern I have, and I heard this several times tonight, is the fact that there's a possibility that what we intend for medical purposes only will not be used for medical purposes. It could be sold on the street to somebody and affect their life negatively. And for me, I don't want to participate in anything that could damage somebody's life. And I'm afraid that with this ordinance, what our good intentions may be, we could and probably will to some degree, maybe not large, but to some degree, we will affect somebody's life negatively. And there's a couple of scriptures, and these are strong scriptures I want to read. First Timothy six-ten says, "The love of money is the root of all kinds of evil, and some people craving money have wandered from the true faith and pierced themselves with many sorrows." And my concern is that we're prioritizing the money. And I know in our world, we need money. But we're prioritizing the money, and we're gonna pierce ourselves with many sorrows. Another scripture, Matthew six-twenty-four. "No one can serve two masters; for you will hate the one and love the other, you will be devoted to one and despise the other. You cannot serve both God and money." And I know the intent is not to serve money here. But when we prioritize that over maybe some reservations we have about marijuana itself, then it concerns me that we're going down the wrong path. Thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do for our community.
I promised them during the break that I'd quit talking. And before I stop talking, I want to clear. I crave a city where we can walk out of our door at any time, day or night, and be safe. I crave a city where I know our children come home when they're supposed to and not in a box. And when I first got elected, that was not true. I see a problem coming. I'm trying, we're trying to figure out a way to deal with that problem. It is not about craving money. It is about craving the safety of this community. Every time somebody gets killed in this city, I grieve. I feel like I failed. When Sergeant Owen got killed, I was beside myself for days because I knew burglaries were rising. I had been told burglaries were increasing, and I did nothing. I'm not doing nothing again. Make no mistake about this, I am craving something, but it's not money. Trust me, I have more than I need, more than I want.
And I understand that the priority here is quality of life, and that's your desire for the city. And I appreciate that over the years that I've been in the city. I appreciate your heart for the city. I know you love the city. And it's not about money. But sometimes we think money is the only solution. And I, as a pastor, my solution is prayer. And I'm gonna be praying for the city. And I pray for you on a regular basis. And my hope is that we don't look at money as the solution, but we look to in God we trust. Thank you.
It's Melanie.
Coker.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. I thought you were a positive one for it, not a negative. I thought you were for it, not against it.
I'm for it.
You're in the wrong stack.
What did I say?
That's okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I don't know. I got all nervous as usual. Anyway, okay. I'm sixty-seven years old, and I've been coming here for nine years, as you know. And I've been providing safe access to many cancer patients in our valley through our cancer centers. And I don't understand where this cultivation ordinance came from. It's just like, I read it about fifty times trying to understand what was it saying? It wasn't saying anything to benefit safe access to our community. It just, we're gonna grow marijuana here, and where does it go? Where does it go? I'm very confused. Because, I mean, the marijuana plant is, God created the plant, and I have many Christians who use it medicinally for all their illnesses, who are ailing, you know, we're old, we get old, things happen. And I see a lot of people that, you know, just benefit greatly. And in health, there is freedom, and we should be able to choose what medicine works for us and what doesn't. And I don't know what else to say. Well, basically is, I'm all nervous again. I don't understand how we can allow the cultivation and not have any way to give safe access to our patients in the valley, because I have proved for nine years, I provided safe access, I paid the taxes, I did everything I was supposed to do, and I made my own regulations. Yeah, I know I wasn't supposed to, but I did. And I made my own regulations, and I have not had any problems for nine years. And I don't give any cannabis to any of our young people in the community. I only see medical patients. And where do I go now? I mean, you know, am I just gonna like, we leave the meeting tonight, and what do I do? I'm confused because I feel like I have a grandfathered clause that, you know, I've been here, and I've been out of, you could, I mean, a person could drive down the street, you're not gonna see the location. I don't advertise big marijuana leaves. It says, Stand Up To Cancer on my door. I'm just here to help the people in a compassionate way. And I guess that's where I wanted to get out. I don't know what to do, because I'm confused about everything.
You know, I can safely say, none of us know what to do. I mean, this is a game changer we weren't ready for.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council people. My name is Matt Dumas. I'm the senior pastor of Central Christian Church. I do not have the pleasure of knowing all you guys personally. I just came from Texas about three and a half years ago. But I can tell you, my experience so far in this community has been really a very positive one. We moved, again, we're from the Dallas area, and for a lot of folks, they said, why come to California? I mean, you're moving from Texas, it's God's country, to California. But you know, when we came to this community, this community for me instantly felt like home. The church there at Central felt like home. Our mission statement is transforming families to live and love like Jesus. And so for me, I'm a pastor, but I really come as a dad. And I know you guys have kids too. You have kids that are gonna grow up in this valley. And my concern is, as a dad, when we came from the mission statement of transforming families, we look at the scriptures, and we see that the family is the, really the basic building block of society. You can look in any culture, the family is the basic building block of society. And as the family goes, so goes the society. If you have strong, healthy families, you've got a strong, healthy community. And so for me, as a dad, you know, I make decisions for my kids. And what I loved is, we started off with the kids singing in a choir. We had the young explorers who came up here. We had, we celebrated the folks that were for the Journey for Justice. We did a lot for the youth, and we said, our youth is our future. And so as a dad, I look at this, and I say, okay, when we talk about introducing marijuana into the community, and I'm with Chris, I hear the stories about folks who are suffering, and for me, there's a lot of compassion. And I say, we gotta figure this out. And my first impulse with Gerald was to go and to pray for him, because to me, that's, it breaks my heart that that's the case. But when we look at all the negative impacts of marijuana, and the, I think it'd be a little naive to think that it wouldn't end up in the school systems, that it wouldn't end up in the streets if we start growing it here. If we introduce that into our community, that somehow my boys are gonna have greater access to it than they would otherwise when it wasn't here. Each of you have a decision to make. Each of you has to go home and kiss their kids and say, I did the best that I could. You know, the decision I made tonight was for my grandkids. The decision I made tonight is for my kids or for my teenagers. The decision I made tonight is for my son in college. That decision has to be one where you're thinking about the family, and at the end of the day, you have to be able to live with that and stand before God and say, I did the best that I could. Thank you.
You know, we are being naive if we think it's not already out there, that there aren't already warehouses in this Antelope Valley where they're growing this, because we know there are. I mean, the fire department walked into one two, three months ago, and on a fire inspection. It was a warehouse full of it. This isn't introducing something, it's regulating something that's here. Now, I wish the law was, we could just shut them down. But nobody really enforces it. We just heard from this lady who's been delivering it for nine years. She comes here at least every couple of months and talks about it. Nobody's told her to stop. Nobody's arrested her. You know, this, the reality of this situation is much different than you think it is. It's something that's been going on that we just act like isn't there. You know? The only thing we're doing now is bringing it out and regulating how it's done. But it is, I mean, the captain will tell you, this is not a priority crime in the sheriff's department. We've got major, major crime issues absorbing all of the resources we have. Am I inaccurate about that? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council staff. Big wigs in the back row over there, love you. For me, this is about compassion. It's about the reality of what you just said. This stuff is in our community. It's affecting people every day. One of the statistics that I was moved by with Denver was that there was a phenomenon called migrant, marijuana migrants, that when this became a reality, moved to Denver because some of these young people thought, what a cool deal, grow pot, yeah. And they didn't get jobs. They couldn't find the work. And they ended up homeless. And so their homelessness went up, the crime rate on misdemeanors went up thirty-five percent. The statistic for the increase of vehicle accidents was accurate. Before I said, and thanks for mentioning earlier about them, I was trying to help the homeless, because I know we're gonna continue to do that. But I wasn't defeated by that, because I know God has a better plan, one that I think we can help a lot of homeless and not be so costly to the city. But today, I saw forty people through my office, a couple of whom I asked, I had to ask them how long ago since you smoked a joint, because I could smell it in my office. The Saturday before Christmas, we had a thing called Graceful Christmas at Grace Resource Center. And Chris's brother was our Santa, and his wife was Mrs. Claus. And afterwards, told me that they counted twenty-six children who smelled of marijuana. It broke his heart. Every day, we deal with this. And so, in this process, we're trying to figure out how to pay for the effects of all that. I get that. But I don't know, I think our example is more important than paying for the effects of all that. I know that there will be a way for us to continue to fight against homelessness and hunger and those things that we've worked so hard to defeat for many, many years. But I also know that there's a better answer for this. We have an incredible law enforcement agency. We have incredible people. By the very fact that the retired ones are still here working, that blows my mind. When I retire, I'm going fishing. No, I'm just kidding. But I mean, the reality is, I just want you to know, I think there's a bigger answer than what can we do to raise this money. And I think the example to our kids and their kids, to my grandkids, who I had dinner with tonight before I come over here, that's the ultimate for me. And so I would urge you to keep that in mind when you make this vote. And we will all stand behind you. We'll find a way to get the money. We'll find a way to fight that battle too. But I think we need to set a great example for our kids and our families.
Steve Baker is one of my former students. My name is Charlie Williams, and I'm a retired teacher, coach, of over thirty years at Antelope Valley High School. Culture is defined in part as a way of life, customs, mores, value systems, and lifestyles. My concern regarding the cultivation of marijuana here in Lancaster is the possible alteration of culture, especially in our youngsters. For example, in Colorado, where marijuana is legally grown, school resource officers, counselors, nurses, and staff with Colorado School and Safety disciplinary programs report an increase in marijuana-related incidences in middle schools as well as high schools. These officials believe the increase is linked directly to the message youngsters are picking up, which is, the legalization of marijuana means it is safe and therefore acceptable recreational activity. Another rising problem is that now marijuana is readily available to more youngsters. In the best interests of our community, we should avoid any involvement with marijuana cultivation programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, and it's good to be with you this evening. My name is Brad Hayen. I'd like to speak on the economic impact of the commercial growth of marijuana in our city. And Mr. Mayor, you've said several times that tonight, that whatever we decide tonight, marijuana is coming. So those who've argued for medical marijuana for their medical needs have nothing to fear. We will not significantly impact the supply of medical marijuana, whatever we do here tonight. So I'd like to speak on that economic impact, first because this is new to our area. I don't think we know or can have an accurate picture right now of the potential economic impact. There are just too many unknowns on that. We don't know, for instance, how many cities around us might be in competition for this kind of business, which means we cannot know the potential supply or demand. We can, however, know something about the costs in terms of water and electricity associated with growing marijuana indoors in a climate similar to ours. Statistics are in from Pueblo, Colorado, for instance. I grew up in Colorado, so this is close to where I grew up at. There it has been shown that the lights and air conditioning associated with commercial indoor growth of marijuana in ten facilities has cost about 1.2 million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year since 2014. I know that we, as a city and state, have been very cautious over the last few years with our supply and demand of electricity, and rightfully so. These facilities would put a further strain on that. More relevant for us, though, is the amount of water demanded for these grows. Our city and state have been wise in talking about our need to conserve water for the last few years of drought. And recent weather has made it clear that we are not able to see into the future very far to predict how our water supply will be from year to year. Again, we do know, however, how much marijuana growth demands for water. Marijuana is known as the thirsty weed. Conservative estimates say that one gallon of water is needed per day for each pound of marijuana plant. The average plant is around six pounds, so we're looking at six gallons per day per plant. Growing season is about a hundred and fifty days, so that means that to grow a single marijuana plant needs nine hundred gallons of water. What I would ask is, do we really want to reduce the amount of water we use on parks, lawns, streets, and even in our homes to spend on our thirsty weed? But the real cost, as I see it, is the reputation of our city. We want to be a city that is known for positive things, like we've got a peer business-friendly city, neighborhood impact, which I work with Pastor Rob in as well, and aerospace industry. I grew up in Colorado, like I just said. And over the years, when I was growing up, it was known as a ski city, or ski area, and now it's more known for marijuana growth. Every time I talk about coming from Colorado, people wanna talk about marijuana there. And so I'd rather be a valley that's known for things like neighborhood impact and for business-friendly aerospace industry than known for growing marijuana. business-friendly aerospace industry than known for growing marijuana. What we shouldn't fall prey to is the argument is everyone else is doing it, or that all the other communities around us are doing it. In fact, just the opposite, I think we should take the stand to lead to the ban of cultivation, distribution, and selling of marijuana in our city. Thank you.
Drew Mercy. So Drew, which letter are you going to read?
If you have a copy of the letter that George Runner provided to the council earlier today stating his position, he asked me to come and read it, even though you have a copy, but for everyone else here. As a former councilman, mayor, legislator, and now BOE member, I have several concerns with the proposed ordinance. My office has been engaged in working through the logistical and tax aspects of dealing with medical and recreational cannabis. There are many areas of uncertainty regarding the structural and legal aspects of cannabis in California and the United States. While the goal is to have regulations in place by January 1st, 2018, the state is unlikely to meet this goal, meaning we still do not know what the structure for production, distribution, and sales will look like. This is complicated and difficult, as demonstrated by many public safety and revenue estimation failures in the states that have previously approved cannabis sales. The assertion that a cultivation facility can be set to produce medical-use cannabis only is based on an assumption that the regulations will require a separation between medical and recreational products. We don't have those state regulations in place yet, and it's just as likely, or more so, that there will be no way to regulate this. The plants and oils may be sold to a distributor who would then sell them to a retailer, in the case of the oils to another production facility where they can be put into either vaporizers or desserts and other edibles attractive to children. The end retailer likely won't know whether an item will be sold under medical or recreational uses until the point of sale, when a customer either has a medical card or does not. Even if retailers know what product is for medical and recreational use, the law may not require retailers to segregate their product to avoid selling medical cannabis to recreational users. Federal enforcement is another big question at this time. While the previous Justice Department took an accepting attitude towards state actions on cannabis, Attorney General Jeff Sessions has indicated his intention to enforce all federal laws regarding illegal drugs. Given President Trump's support for asset forfeiture, it would be unwise to proceed with any cannabis policy that could result in property forfeiture. Further, the cash-only nature of the cannabis industry makes revenue projections unreliable in addition to bringing additional public safety aspects and criminal attraction to a high-cash quasi-legal industry. The very nature of having a high-profile, cash-only business makes it a target for robbery and gang activity, driving up public safety costs. It's been said the banking services are now available for payroll and taxes, but this is not accurate. In order to attempt to comply with the various laws, some cannabis businesses are doing things such as writing an employee a check and then cashing it for them on-site, but the cash is on-site, and taxes like those we collect at the Board of Equalization are paid in cash. In fact, Prop 64 requires all cultivators to pay an excise tax to the Board of Equalization on all products they grow. This means that cultivators will need to maintain significant amounts of cash on hand and will be transporting the cash to board offices to make payments. This fact raises additional public safety concerns above and beyond those mentioned previously. Based on all of this, I recommend the council not approve any ordinance legalizing cannabis cultivation or retail in the city of Lancaster. Sincerely, George Runner.
Thank you. Dr. Tom Shepard.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for making this a distinctive community to live in. I'm Dr. Tom Shepard. I spent a career in healthcare. I was CEO of five hospitals. I founded and ran a hospital management company. I have an earned doctorate in health administration from the Medical University of South Carolina. I got into higher education and ran for seven years before I retired the largest medical school producing physicians in the United States. I retired, I came to Lancaster Baptist Church, I'm now the chief of staff there. I have seen from experience what happens with drugs that are regulated by the Food and Drug Administration. They're tightly controlled. Every shift that comes on, on staff at the hospitals that I used to run had inventory sheets, you had an account for every pill that was there or one that was missing. Pharmacies had inventory sheets, everything was highly controlled and regulated. Also, the shipment of the drugs coming in, highly regulated. Why is it then that in the communities I lived in, there were pharmaceutical prescription drugs available on the street for purchase? It's difficult to regulate something that people want to get their hands on that are addictive or have mind-altering capabilities. It's very clear, in fact, we saw the video tonight, that the chemicals in marijuana have some medicinal purposes. In fact, you may not know this, but most of our early drugs came from plants, and they studied the chemicals in the plants, they were able to synthetically produce these into pill form, hence we got some of our modern medicines that we have today. And it may, in fact, happen with marijuana, as we've seen some anecdotal evidence here, but the studies have to be done, and it has to be regulated, and it has to be approved, dosage and everything else, as well as the side effects, so that the Food and Drug Administration, you can be an informed consumer. Right now, we're saying we're going to, what this ordinance says is, we'll grow it here, and it will be regulated, and it will go to help other people. That's fine, but you'll grow it here, you'll help other people, but there will also be a dispersion amongst the groups and end up on our playgrounds, in our schools, and hurting other people. It's a Schedule I drug. What that means is there's mind-altering capabilities to it. Schedule II narcotics is the highest form of narcotic that we carry in hospitals and in our pharmacies, highly regulated. I would endeavor or endorse doing studies so that it could move maybe to a Schedule II drug that can be medicinally applied. But with us making it here, allowing it to grow, collecting tax money, and then finding it in playgrounds or in schools, our communities, I don't think is a good thing to do for our country. Thank you.
Tom, I agreed with almost everything you said, but how is this going to make one bit of difference as to how much marijuana is out there? How much marijuana hits our city streets? How will it make one bit of difference?
Because you, as the representatives of this community, are either voting to endorse that supply because you know what's going to happen, or to take a stand and say, no, we are Lancaster, California, we are a Christian city, and we are not going to participate because it's going to happen. It's going to end up in our streets and in our communities. History tells it. We've been, FDA's been dealing with Schedule II narcotics for decades. I started in hospitals in 1972, and there's still a problem today.
Well, doesn't that same line of reasoning mean that we should not allow a liquor store to open up? We should not allow a brewery to open up? There are a lot of sinful businesses out there that I don't endorse, but I wouldn't think of using my power as mayor to stop it, because it's America, it's constitutional, it's, for whatever reason, they've decided to elevate this to a business.
Well, they have, but federally, it's still an illegal drug. And what you're doing when you tax it here, you're saying, come into my community, and we will participate in growing and cultivating a drug that is still illegal federally and allow it to be a part of our tax base here. That's the part I don't agree with.
Okay, fair enough. Brian Schoonmaker. You've been scowling at me all night, Brian.
No, 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 that's not scowling. It's Valentine's Day, and my wife is wanting a date.
Blame Chris.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I, well, I'm not even getting on that. In 1929 in Chicago, there was a Valentine's massacre orchestrated by Al Capone. I'm thinking tonight might be the second version. Looking at all the guys out there, they might not show up tomorrow somewhere, but anyways. My name is Brian Schoonmaker. I worked the sheriff's department for 31-plus years. I retired less than two years ago. The majority of my 31 years was as a detective in some form or another, eight years was as a gang investigator, street gangs, which always involved narcotics investigations because it always went hand-in-hand. And that was out here in Lancaster. I also worked the station-level detective bureau, which I was involved in investigating crimes against persons, which is robberies, assaults, domestic violence, and I know how drugs have always related to those crimes as well. The last 10 years of my career, I spent downtown as a homicide detective, working all LA County. So I have extensive experience in contacting the criminal element. I've interviewed thousands of suspects, and I kind of get into their minds because I'm trying to get out the truth, which is very difficult when they've committed a crime because they're not readily going to admit that. So I think I have some expertise on how suspects think and how they behave and what motivates them. And so I'm going to try to represent perhaps what a suspect would think hearing what the city is planning on doing. There is, it is true that whenever you have a facility that grows marijuana, it does attract the criminal element because they are interested in money and a quality product so they can use it and resell it. So it is reality that whatever facilities go up that grows a quality marijuana that is controlled for purposes of quality, a suspect is going to be more attracted to that facility than the street merchant, urgent. The street seller, let me say it that way, that sells a less-quality product. The gentleman that works at a facility already says that they work really hard at developing a quality plant for medicinal purposes. That quality attracts the criminal because he's going to get more money for a quality joint than for something that's less of quality. The kind of crimes that he will bring into the city, targeting those facilities, is extortion, where prison gangs control the street gangs when it comes to drugs. Street gangs are mandated by the prison gangs to get into these facilities and extort money and product from them in order to siphon up cash and money to the prisons, where the lifers need to survive. So you're talking about influence of not only street gangs, but Mexican mafia, the Black Gorilla Family, BGF, Nazi lowriders, or Aryan Brotherhood. All those prison gangs have a long reach, and they come into our city, we've dealt with that already, but the prison gangs will persuade and force and push and threaten gang members on the streets to investigate and get into these buildings for the benefit of the prison gangs. There will be an increased risk of robberies, street robberies around that facility, people coming in and out. I understand that it's a grow facility, it's not a dispensary, however. Criminals become sophisticated, and they start to follow vehicles away from the facility looking for that big cash or the product. They break into the facility perhaps at night to burglarize it, and they're not looking for the green product, they're looking for the dry room, which is where they dry the product, and that's when it's ready to sell. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars in one room that they can just snatch up, bag up, and drive away with it. Very lucrative, very tempting.
Brian, I really broke the rules.
I'm up, okay. Well, let me summarize then.
Okay.
The crime rate will increase. The suspect does not care a whit that it's labeled medicinal marijuana when he goes in there. It doesn't matter to him. The laws are not made for the law-abiders that we have here, and everybody that is on the other side are law-abiding. We don't make the laws for them. The laws are made for the lawbreakers. And I'm just telling you, giving you a mindset of what they are and how they think and their response to this very lucrative business. And one way, I'll end with this, I know from the criminal standpoint, the best way you can protect a facility of grow, open facilities that dispense, because that's an easier target, and they'll leave the grows alone, but now you've got another problem. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Larry Cox.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this time. I've been a resident of Lancaster for about 29 years now, originally from Indiana. Been raising a family here over 20 years. I've worked in engineering and aerospace fields and education in our area over these years. My background is a master's degree in nuclear engineering, and in a moment, I'll share some statistics because I don't mind reading over these journals with lots of numbers. But today, I want to wish to express my concern over the city council's passing of this ordinance. To concur with some things I've heard already, the American Heart Association found that marijuana smoke was three times as damaging as cigarette smoke. The National Highway Traffic Safety Association found that those driving in our country with marijuana in their system has increased 50% from 2007 to 2014, a statistic that in all likelihood may continue to rise. But I want to focus more, there was a vast comprehensive study done by the National Academies of Science, Health, and Engineering. This was just completed in 2016, it will be released this year in book form. They investigated over 10,000 abstracts of research that were done from 1999 to 2016 to determine how health issues were related to marijuana usage. Some of the claims in the video that the city showed earlier were claims that, based on the research of over 10,000 people's research had done, that were shown to be limited or inconclusive. There may be isolated incidents of that helping, but again, on a large scale, that is very inconclusive, what was presented to us as factual. What I would like us to understand is some things that were considered substantial in this report that will be coming out. There are worse respiratory symptoms and more frequent chronic bronchitis. There is an increased risk of motor vehicle crashes. Also, an increased risk of overdose injuries, including respiratory distress among pediatric populations in the U.S. where cannabis is legal. Also, there is a greater development, a substantial finding, in the development of schizophrenia and other psychoses. Even a moderate increase in suicidal tendencies and completion of that. Also, there's found initiating cannabis use at an earlier age, again, substantial evidence it is a risk factor for the development of problem cannabis use later on, and I believe that sends the wrong message to our children. There's moderate evidence between cannabis use and the development of substance dependence for substances including alcohol, tobacco, and other illicit drugs. Again, a gateway drug, as we've heard. And I just want to encourage you, for the safety of us all and our children, to vote against this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. He is accurate, by the way. I mean, it does have a lot of bad things, there isn't any doubt about that. There's also not any doubt that it does help a lot of illnesses. I mean, let's keep it in perspective. Toby England. Toby England.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. It's a privilege to be with you guys tonight, and I want to express my appreciation for your leadership and the goodwill and confidence that I have in your decision and commitment to make choices that benefit the members of our community. And I've seen that over the years that I've lived here, and we believe that. That's why you're behind that desk, and we appreciate your service in that area. I want to speak in opposition to the measure before the council tonight because I believe, as an educator and as a father, that there is a pedagogical impact of that which is regulated and legislated. I think the young people watch that which is legal or illegal. What is before the council tonight is not whether or not we ought to allow members of our community to benefit from medical marijuana. The proposal is not possible for us to pass that would allow that or not allow that. However, we are able to regulate whether or not it's grown here and perhaps some of the frequency with which we find it in our community. I had a deputy whose daughter goes to school with my daughter in the same class tell me just this last weekend that he has seen the very medical marijuana tags that we saw displayed earlier on school grounds. I don't, I've looked and looked for studies to validate how much non-patient use medical marijuana has, and I was unable to find that. But I know that it's not zero. And I think that there's a concern that I have for our young people, and I think that wisdom would dictate that we vote against this. The neighborhoods, the communities, and the individuals that are most susceptible to drug abuse are those specific communities that are the most disadvantaged. Statistics are plethora on that. And it will be the most disadvantaged people that disproportionately bear the impact of increased drug abuse, which will follow an increased supply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paris.
Good evening.
City Council and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present my statement that I have pre-written and pre-printed, so I'll be under my three minutes. As the executive director of kids charities, representing over 30 charities who provide numerous services and aid to our valley's most needy children, I'm puzzled by the urgency to begin the production and cultivation of the marijuana plant in our community. I think it's prudent to consider all of the ramifications, in particular, the unknowns from the lack of practice at this time. Specifically in regards to cannabis cultivation, I'd like to ask the council to consider a ban from growing, manufacturing, or producing cannabis plant in Lancaster, or perhaps a serious consideration of a moratorium on the efforts to move forward on a decision at this time. Whereas it is understood that Proposition 64 passed in favor of cultivating cannabis just four months ago, it seems rational and judicious to allow a reasonable period of time to pass in order to observe and learn from the involvement and application of other cities who went into production, thereby obtaining results and outcomes from their experiences. It is also understood that millions of dollars in tax revenues can be generated from the cultivation and commercial sales of the plant, but it appears too soon to determine whether or not the positive outweighs the negative or vice versa. In Poway, Mayor Steve Voss said the tax boost isn't worth the problems the law would bring. Quote, "Some other cities like San Diego have decided to tax potential sales, but in Poway, there are more important things than money," he said. "This legislation is likely to have unintended consequences. We have no idea what they'll be. To force this down the citizens of Poway's throat at this time would not be appropriate." End quote. In the city of Woodland, Councilman Sean Denny warned his colleagues about the impact marijuana growers could have on their city. Quote, "I caution Woodland and the city that letting marijuana growing take over, that it damages our brand," end quote. There has been an enormous increase in cities and counties, 233 specifically in this report that I have here, that have enacted or introduced a ban on either personal cultivation, commercial cultivation, processing, manufacturing, testing, dispensing, delivering, and even consumption in some instances. It's now believed that 43% of the entire state of California has seen a ban or is waiting, has seen a banner, is waiting for one. In conclusion, I'm requesting that you ban it or place a moratorium on the production and cultivation of cannabis plant in our city. Lastly, we cannot, or we can take a stance against this, or we can allow the unknown and the inexperience to influence us. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Brendan Ewing.
Thank you, Mayor Paris.
I know where you're from.
I'm a new guy. Thank you, Mayor Paris. Vice Mayor Chris and the city council for allowing me to speak this evening. I am new to the Antelope Valley. I've been here just a month. I'm a former Marine and Iraq veteran. I have an undergraduate degree from Baylor University in International Studies and Economics and a master's in education here from West Coast Baptist College. I'm a school administrator at Lancaster Baptist School, and I'd just like to speak to you in opposition about the proposal here for a number of reasons. First, let me say I'm not against medicine. I'm not against compassion or helping people. I'm not against helping other wounded warriors. But I am against doing it in the manner in which that we're attempting to do it now. What other medicine has been rolled out in the manner that we're trying to roll out medicinal marijuana? I heard tonight that we have a well-crafted plan, and in reading through the legislation, I don't doubt that there are regulations and things that have been well-thought-out. But as an administrator, I know that I've had many well-crafted plans, and what's in my handbook isn't necessarily what's happening in the hallways of the school. And so I don't think that we can dispute, I haven't heard anybody challenge the claim that this legislation for California and the legislation that we're looking at will increase crime, will increase homelessness, will increase other societal problems. And so I would just put emphasis on the California law and the sections where it says that there is local jurisdiction to prohibit some of these actions. And sir, I would just recommend and challenge the city council to prohibit as much of the marijuana and marijuana industry as possible from the city. To protect our city and our future, introducing more marijuana doesn't solve our problem. It makes the problem worse. And sir, you said that this is already going on in our streets, and I hate to be the guy to bring up taxes tonight, but sir, I, as a husband and a father and a principal, I would rather pay higher taxes and have a clean city than to introduce something and make our city worse. You said, sir, that you would not like to use your power in speaking on alcohol. You would not use your power to stop alcohol. I would just challenge you, sir, and say, do not use your power to start marijuana here in the Antelope Valley. Thank you, sir, for your time.
You know, Pastor was bragging about you, and I can see why.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for being here and allowing me to opine just a little bit. I have some thoughts on the issue of licensing the commercial cultivation of marijuana. Having been under the influence for several years and now being clean for over 40 years, I know a little bit about the issue. Mark made the point that marijuana is a gateway drug. It is. That's been my experience. And the legalization of marijuana models something that should be avoided, the tacit approval of experimentation. Given the more conservative leadership that we enjoy here in Lancaster, I suspect that the majority of the council members voted against the legalization of marijuana for recreational use. Assuming that to be the case, my question is, is licensing the commercial cultivation of pot worth compromising our consciences and thereby losing the position that we currently have to speak out to our children and grandchildren against the mind-altering substances? If we, as a city, become producers, we will lose the moral high ground of calling people to live soberly and in order. Please consider that possibility before making an approval. I remember when Lancaster outlawed sex. We made headlines all over the world.
Didn't work.
But the point was that the city council took some action to zone sex shops out of the mainstream of the city, and that was a good thing. I remember a few years ago, you kicked the Vagos out of town, out of the desert inn. And so now...
My wife still remembers that.
So my question would be, why not become the city that took on the state and won? Just an idea.
Tim McDonald.
Good evening, and thank you for a little bit of your time. Don't let the flight suit throw you. I'm not speaking as a representative of the federal government. I'm a civilian test pilot up at Edwards and just a concerned local citizen. I had a script all prepared, but based on what I've learned tonight, I've completely pitched it. This is off the cuff, okay? And I have three main broad questions for which there may not be answers yet. They may be just questions to ponder at this point. I have in my hand a prescription a doctor gave me recently. I never had it filled in parts because every day I took this antibiotic, I would not be allowed to fly F-16s. As I look at the back of this, I see no less than 10 security measures and protections on this to help pharmacists detect counterfeits for an antibiotic. So my first question, then, is if the medical marijuana, the medical case for marijuana is as strong as the CNN video suggested earlier on tonight, where was the compassionate grassroots level of effort from communities like ours to get it dispensed safely through a pharmacy like this? Where was the compassionate grassroots level effort to pressure the FDA to certify this drug? Okay? There's my first question. The second question, it goes to the ordinance itself, and I agree. I'm going to say that I think the city council has done an enormous amount of great work in doing their best to put an airtight box around the cultivation process to minimize any potential collateral damage. But here's what's bugging me. If the seduction of getting high, if the power of concentrated THC addiction, and if the remarketability, the lucrative remarketability of medical marijuana is already sufficient to slice through all of the protections that are already in place to keep medical marijuana off of our middle school grounds, do we really believe that we can design a box airtight enough to stop this from propagating into the hands of our children? Is any amount of tax dollars worth that? Third question. If we must act or have something possibly worse forced down our throats from Sacramento, why does our cultivation program have to be this big? Couldn't we write an ordinance that basically says our cultivation process consists of one plant sitting on Mayor Paris's desk? Sacramento's done. Out of our face. Your job, sir, to take care of it, okay? All right? And so, problem solved, okay? So the only way, now, Mayor Paris, you've answered that question, and the answer is money, right? And so I'm gonna, I would like to speak with you as fast as I can, Christian to Christian, about something. I've learned, as a retired lieutenant colonel, one more time, that leadership is hard, and I do not envy you. But as a Christian, I can tell you this from firsthand experience repeatedly in my relationship with the Lord. He brings challenges into our lives for which there is no conceivable earthly solution. And what he expects of us is to look at what he tells us to do in his word. Do it. Trust him for the outcome. I am telling you for a fact, that campus out in 40th East and Lancaster Boulevard went up that way. Thousands of people operating counter to intuition and trusting God, doing what was right by his standard and trusting him for the outcome. Pray for his help if you have thousands behind you doing the same. That's my exhortation to you, sir. Thank you.
No, wait a minute. Six weeks ago, I had brain surgery, brain surgery. And two hours after they were done, I, my wife took a picture of me in my hospital bed, working on my, you know, using my iPhone.
God is good.
Yes, yes. And then I went home.
Amen.
And they didn't have any shots to give me at home. And I was in bed with my dog crawled up around me for the next week with an ice pack on my head in unbearable pain, intractable pain. And as you've heard reference, I have resources most people don't have. But nonetheless, for a week, I was that way. And quite frankly, I just made a decision that I wasn't going to do what I knew I could do to alleviate the pain. But I started thinking about how many people don't have resources, don't even have the ability to get in to see the doctor in a week. And I oftentimes, and I started wondering, maybe this is the only thing those people have. And I just don't want to let go totally of the idea that we leave a lot of people in agony out there, and we do not do anything for them. And I don't know that this isn't the only solution. And so I don't, I don't really feel conflicted as a Christian because I know what Jesus would do. He alleviated suffering. And right now, the poor people of this community, when they get sick, when they hurt, if it's just a tooth, I mean, imagine what an abscess tooth does to you. This is the only thing available to them. And I'm just not convinced that my Christian values compel me to deny them the only relief that seems to be available.
I understand.
And let's just keep that in the equation.
I understand.
I don't know the answer to the equation.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. And Mayor Paris, what I would also remind you is that Jesus did not always heal. And today, we pray for healing and relief from suffering, and he doesn't always grant it. In his sovereignty, we must learn to trust him with those. We help where we can while realizing that there are limitations to what we can do. We have to compare the cost of alleviating this suffering with this type of medical approach against the cost of car accidents and addictions and broken families and everything else as well. And I believe there's a great deal of evidence to consider that the cost may outweigh the benefits. But I believe that as a leader, if we make it our goal to alleviate all suffering, we are going to be, in this life, sin-cursed world, perpetually vexed and heartbroken and frustrated. We do what we can, following his rules first. Leave the rest to him. We keep, we put locks on doors to keep honest people honest, right? Determined criminals are going to do what they do, okay? I've heard a little bit of fatalism here tonight, and that's discouraged me a little bit. Fatalism is sort of the opposite of faith. I'm not here to question your faith, sir, not by any means. I am here to try to challenge it, if I can.
You did.
If I can.
You did.
Okay. To maybe encourage you to take that next step, to do what pragmatically doesn't seem to work on the face of things. But I am telling you, God has blown me away with the unexpected ways he has solved problems that seemed to not do... that seemed to not to deny solving.
So do you want to chair a commission?
We'll have some day.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Happy Valentine's Day. And to my wife, I think she's watching on livestream, I love you. Sorry. I'll talk to Chris later. Thirty-one years ago, my family and I had moved to the Antelope Valley, specifically Lancaster, by God's providential hand, from El Salvador. The reason, very simple, this was known as the safest, cleanest, best place to live in LA County. And so, first of all, I come to you as a citizen that loves this valley and has made a decision to raise my family here. We could have moved to the Midwest and a lot of different places, but here's where my wife and I live. I have tried to do my best to better this place. I remember as an eight-year-old, being an interpreter at Grace Resource Center thirty-one years ago, serving on the youth commission, sitting up there, it was a lot of fun. And I can tell you, secondly, I come to you as not just a citizen, but as somebody who's very concerned. Frankly, as a father, my wife and I moved here, and I know, we live in an area out in Antelope Acres where it's unincorporated, and it's every week somebody's dying. And a lot of times, it's actually, just about every time, you can read about it, it's frankly drug abuse, and it's very alarming to us. We stay home Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, to be honest with you. Thirdly, I come to you as a, as somebody who's experienced the hardships of life here the last thirty-one years. I buried my mother at Joshua Mortuary nine years ago. She died from cancer. I get the humanitarian side to this, but I still believe in right. And I still believe that my mother, before she died, said, "You do right. Sometimes it won't be convenient. It may be expensive." But I believe, Mayor, that's what I'm here to encourage you to do. Because fourthly, I come to you as somebody who's a minister. I pastor a congregation of 1,200 immigrants. All of them tell me something like this. I came to this valley to get away from the San Fernando, the Long Beach, the XYZ place, and the drug and the culture. They loathe what drugs have done to their nations, and they came here to get away from it. And I can tell you, I'm speaking for a lot of alarmed people. I'm going to Medellin, Nicaragua in about three days, and I'll be in an area that has 10,000 more natural resources than this desert. And yet they have the profoundest poverty, and I'll tell you why. Because we've honored the Lord in this country. And that's why those people have moved here. Lastly, my time is up. I come to you as a voter, because I voted for you because you said you stood for family, my family, and you said you valued children. You didn't tell me then you valued taxes and pot and all these other things. And I understand why. But I just want to remind you today-
Really? Really? You're going to stand there and tell me that I value pot? Really? Of all we've talked about tonight-
You said talk.
You think I have an affinity for pot? I'm sorry, but you've hurt my feelings with that one.
I apologize. I retract that. Let me say it this way. I do want to remind you that I voted for you, and we asked you to represent us. That's all I'm trying to say tonight.
Thank you.
I apologize for offending you.
Thank you.
To, to cast us in the light of being in favor of drugs is reprehensible. And if any of you out there are tempted to do it, recognize that. And yes, I cannot tell you the hours we have stayed up, the prayers we have prayed for the children of this community. And whatever I decide tonight, it will be the children of this community I am concerned about. Because trust me, our valley is about to change in light of the laws they are passing. And I'm trying to figure out, as everyone else up here is, how to deal with that before it happens. You know, eight, for the last eight years, I haven't waited. We haven't waited for things to happen to us and then respond. That's why we took unemployment from 20% to 4%. And in a year from now, it'll be 2%. We might not always make the right decisions, but when we see something coming at us, we act. We are unafraid to act. Henry, I'm not, I'm not really upset, am I? Henry's telling me to quiet down.
I just don't want anybody to get the wrong idea. I am not up here supporting pot or any other drug. And I think you all know what I would do to people who, who deal drugs if I could. I mean, I don't know that that guy in the Philippines has got it wrong. I don't. All right?
Hello, Council and Mayor. Pastor Chris and Pastor Paul Chapel, and of course Bishop Hearns already so eloquently said what I was going to say, encapsulate everything in three minutes. But I do just want to speak from the heart. Pastor Westside Christian Fellowship, and I was born at Antelope Valley Hospital in 1969. I've got a past of drug abuse and alcoholism, and God has set me free. It's a miracle. So I can relate. And pastors are on the front line. We see the damage done every single day. And if I've had Paul Chapel, Pastor Chris, Reverend Hearns, and all these other pastors coming here and sounding the alarms, I would listen. I would listen deeply, and I would take it to God, and I would contemplate that. Because we are, we are at a crossroads, and the answer is to seek God and to look to Him. We see the damage done. And I think something just that's hard for me is hearing things like, we know it's a gateway, we know it's this. And just, I believe it was last year, I sat on Sierra Highway and held a three-year-old girl on the grass while the coroners came and got her mom from an overdose of pills in a hotel, and also spending time with other parents whose daughter overdosed on heroin here, Santa Clarita. And it's a gateway drug, and I just have a problem with dismissing that. Not that you are, just that I don't want us to come across as, well, we know it's this. It's hurting lives. It's hurting lives in a very powerful way, and we see the damage firsthand. And I just want, would really consider, the Bible says, in the multitude of counsel there is safety. So you can take safety in the fact that Christian leaders are encouraging you to relook this decision. I feel strongly and passionately about this, that we are actually leading people in the wrong direction. And I'll just leave you with this thought. The next generation is looking to leadership. You have the courage right now to take a stand, and yes, other cities are doing it, but that doesn't mean that we do it. Other cities are taking certain efforts, but it doesn't mean we need to do that. Also, I want you to consider, where are you getting the counsel from? We have no vested interest. We have no skin in the game. You're, I'm sure here are real estate brokers and people with vested interests that will and are set to make a lot of money. So what is propelling their advice? What is motivating their decision? Ours just comes from a purely compassionate heart. I will leave you with this. I've never met one family in all of my life here that has said, "I can't get marijuana or Valium or Xanax or Oxy." The problem is, we have too much, and we have to take a stand at some point. And we're hoping and praying that this leadership team would take that stand. Thank you.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time, Mayor. Yes, you and I and Councilman Mann were on the planning commission from 1990 to 1994. You look different then. I have, I have one suggestion. We change the name from marijuana to antibiotics so we can all go home. Because when, when something is once demonized, it's hard to ever love that again. Adolf was a popular name in Germany until Hitler wore the name. And then children don't get named that anymore. And I think we have to be very careful that, now, I might be one of the oldest people here, still awake. I'm 77. I moved to Little Rock, California in 1944. So I've stayed around the Antelope Valley most of my life. I lived in Lancaster for 25 years. Now we live in Palmdale. But I was here before we had all of this. It was just a lot of sticks and a couple ice cream stands. But what I've seen here tonight, thankfully, you, the council, have set a tone for this of kindness and generosity. I've been educated since I've been here tonight. I've met some people. What I see here is that we're doing something that we should never be charged with. We're taking, we're taking all of the garbage dumped on drug problems and connecting it with what could be useful medicine for people. And these people who, who don't have medicine right now are, or have been, and have been successfully being medicating themselves or having with somebody's help, taking something to get rid of the pain. I agree with you, Mayor Paris, that there are a lot of poor people who self-medicate because they hurt. I'll conclude with, with two things. One is, in one of my conversations here this evening, I thought of my mother who died some years ago. She was born in 1914. She was 94 when she passed away. She suffered from acute depression. And got worse as she got older. For about the last 20 years of her life, she would scarcely talk to anyone, and she thought everyone was after her. I could never convince her to take antidepressant until she spent her last week in the hospital, and the doctor gave her some without telling her. And she was a different person. I take antidepressants. Most people won't say what they do, so we don't hear about these things. We hear some, we saw incredible passionate pictures here this evening. We could have on another screen over here, we could have all of the suffering caused by, by this. But I think, I think we've been given something that can't be solved. And so I agree with, with, with two things, with what Charlie Williams said, that the young, when you vote yes on this, young people, young people, considering what they're going to do, will only remember one thing. They're not going to read the fine print. We knew how we are when we're 10 or 12 or 15 or even 25. We just want to know, oh, did they vote for it? Oh, great. Now I can do it. Okay? That's hard to live down. You could take out three pages in the Valley Press and print all the reasons, and nobody's going to read them. They want to know, they want to know something more. And I think this takes some strategy. Somebody suggested a moment ago, the woman wearing the black suit, that this needs, let's see, what's the word I had to write down here so I wouldn't forget it? Let me see here, I got it somewhere. Yeah, what we need here is a continuance. We need some more time to deal with this. And I know, it's been talked to death, but I'm not talking about everything we talked about tonight. But I'm talking about can, can these kinds of time limits? Look what they do in a court when there's something serious. They just put it off for a few more weeks or a few more months. Or I have a friend who's been going through it for four years. I'm not suggesting four years. I'm suggesting, though, that there be something strategic happen, and that is to separate out any insinuation toward the people who are benefiting, honestly benefiting, from pain medicine or from medicine that helps them to live their life, that would be their last day of their life. Or in the case of my mother, she had one week when she was smiling. So I appreciate your long suffering with everything going on here tonight. But I think that, that there is something that, that this city can, can at least lead, if not teach, because other people will watch. And if it works, then it will work. And if it doesn't, then it won't. But the, the way the law's been written, and I don't doubt it was written that way on purpose, I think it was, to make it very complicated and also a no win for whoever got in the game. And I think something, I think there must be something that can be done about that. And the last thing that I would like to say, just a minute here, I got it all written down That I would urge you to vote no on this, considering what we know right now. But I'm, but I'm suggesting that, that you don't vote tonight, and that you take another strategic look at this and say, all right, what, how can we, how can we be compassionate toward the people who need some sort of alleviation from their suffering? We don't know what good things might come from this. We don't know. Nothing would have, okay, I'm done. I'm sorry. I've taken way too long. Thank you, thank you for your leadership in this city.
Chuck, you get wiser with every year.
One of the advantages, I guess, to speaking late is that everybody has said everything. But I do want to just take a couple of minutes. My name is Pat Tanner. I have lived in Lancaster for the last 37 years with my wife of 38 years. We have three children, two wonderful in-laws, and two grandchildren, all who live and serve in this community. Joel's family has been here for more than 100 years, and my children represent the sixth generation of her family. I have held the LCSW, which is a Licensed Clinical Social Worker license, for over 12 years, and have had a practice that averages about 15 clients a week. And it's from this perspective that I come to the council today, and thank you for hearing me. The diagnostic and statistical manual is the American Psychological Association's Bible, as it were, and most of the things have already been covered. But I wanted to cover a couple of, a couple of things and read directly from, from the DSM-5. Many areas of psychological, cognitive, and health functioning may be compromised in relation to cannabis use disorder. Cognitive function, particularly higher executive function, appears to be compromised in cannabis users. Cannabis use has been related to a reduction in pro-social, goal-oriented activity, which some have labeled an antimotivational system or syndrome that manifests itself in poor school performance and employment problems. Similarly, cannabis-associated problems with social relationships are commonly reported to those with cannabis use disorder. Accidents, which we've already spoken about. Cannabis can be used, cannabis use can be, can contribute to the onset of acute psychotic episodes, can exacerbate other symptoms, and can adversely affect treatment in major psychotic illnesses. There is a comorbidity, which means that cannabis use is tied also to, to other uses of alcohol, 40%, cocaine, 20, 12%, methamphetamine, 6%, 74% of the people that, that use cannabis use another substance. 33% of adolescents with cannabis use disorder have internalizing disorders, anxiety, depression, post-traumatic stress. And 60% have externalizing disorders like conduct. You've said that it's a bad drug. We know that. In the last 12 years, it has been my experience, the people that have come with medical- In the last twelve years, it has been my experience, the people that have come with medical marijuana cards and using cannabis, thereby legally, only one has maintained the cannabis use for an effectively medical, medically-based. I've served well over fifty people that have used the drug to self-medicate for psychological pain, and the bulk of those have turned to cannabis as the solution for their search for comfort, abandoning even the pretense of pain relief. Mental illness is defined in these pages, but I would like to put forth a definition of mental health. It is living a high moral code that has its origin outside of the propagation of self and living consistently within it. If we do not do that, it will affect us mentally, emotionally, and eventually impact our identity. As the individual goes, so goes the community. This council passed an ordinance that prohibits the sale of marijuana within the city limits because of the dangers they saw to the community. Before this body is now an ordinance that in effect says that we know that it is dangerous to another community that sells the product, but will grow it and send it, those dangers to other communities. Now, I want to, because I didn't know how, I, I want to, in a sense, modify that. I know that you're looking for the use to be purely medical. But I think you can see with my experience that purely medical doesn't ever stay fully, fully medical. And so I'm gonna ask you to vote no as well, because I am convinced, with my experience, that medical marijuana doesn't stay medical marijuana. It becomes recreational. That's our identity. Please protect it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Celine has, well, wait a minute. I wanna make sure we're fair here. He's asked to speak again, and he hasn't spoke yet, but he is on the other side. Does anybody have a problem? We give him three minutes? Okay, come on up. Thank you. And tell me how we, tell me if we can know that whatever is grown in these facilities is going to be medical marijuana. And now, I understand there's a lot of people with medical marijuana cards that shouldn't have them, but how do we know?
Well, first of all, I didn't come up to talk about that. I came to talk about, I've listened all evening, I spoke with the bishop during the break, and I'm not here to debate whether marijuana's a good thing or not a good thing. What I'm here to talk about is, in the city of Lancaster, like other cities around the state, around the country, when they fail to regulate, they have a thriving black market. Somebody testified earlier about prison gangs and cartels, and I agree with that. But not when you regulate. It's gonna happen. There's always gonna be a black market. There's a black market for alcohol still around the country. There are illegal stills. There are people buying pharmaceuticals online. Kids have them, people have them, adults have them. So we're in an epidemic of illegal drugs. Now, we're talking about medical marijuana. Saw a video, you saw people testify how it helps them. I've heard the other sides for the last ten years. I'm not here to debate it. I'm here to tell you that the city needs to take a stand, it needs to deal with illegal grows that are in the city right now. And by regulating it, you have the state behind you, there are laws, the recreational law won't apply here except to the fact that you'll recognize, the state of California will recognize Lancaster's taking a stand. And that's the point I wanted to make. There are unintended consequences. I heard people testify tonight that kids are walking into their church or their meetings, and they have marijuana in their breath. Where are they getting it from right now? If there are illegal grows in the city of Lancaster, it will not go into a legal supply chain. It will stay right here. It'll end up in your schools, which it already is, apparently, and in your churches. People are counseling people and dealing with it. So the city does need to take a stand, and it's not about how you regulate or what you do. The state has a very stringent medical marijuana law. Every plant will be tagged. Lisa testified earlier, Lisa's my wife, by the way, for anybody that needs to know. We're compliance lawyers. We're about regulation. We've dealt in Colorado. We saw what happened there. In cities that did not regulate in Colorado, they didn't get state money, and that's where all the black market went. Denver does not have a thriving black market. Crime in Denver, and I was trying to pull up an article, but I'm not gonna read it to you all, 'cause I'm exhausted, and I can imagine how you all feel. But crime related to marijuana is up less than one percent in Colorado. Population is up. Homelessness is up everywhere, here, LA, everywhere. So we need to deal with this. The city needs to deal with it. And you have an opportunity right now to regulate it, to allow for a structured medical marijuana cultivation and manufacturing ordinance only. No one is proposing any kind of dispensaries. No one is inviting people to come in and bring drugs to any kids. We're against that. I have four kids. We are against that. We're about regulating and giving you the opportunity to protect your law enforcement, to protect fire department, and collect enough money to regulate. That's it.
Thank you. We're gonna take ten minutes.
Would you like to close the public hearing before we do that?
Do I have magic doors today?
Yeah.
Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
You know, I wanna, I wanna thank you. I was expecting something else. I, I am overwhelmed by the, by the love in the room in a very contentious subject. And if nothing else, I think you've demonstrated how a community should react in the face of disagreement, because it's not what I see on television, and it's not what I see in other city councils. And I, I love you guys. I just do. There was a concern expressed that I didn't let some people speak, and I wanna clear that up now. What we discovered eight years ago, when I first took this seat, was that people would manipulate the speaker, the speaker cards, so that they could be the last person that spoke. And I didn't think that was fair. And so we, for eight years, have had a rule. There's a time limit of when those speaker cards have to go in. And once the first person starts speaking, no more cards. Apparently, tonight, there were some people who put some cards in at the end. They were advised, they were late, and that's just the rule. And if that offended anybody, I'm sorry, but a lot of rules offend me, too. It's just the rule. And so I, I thought I would clear that up. And now I'd like to open it up to the council. You've heard, heard me speak enough.
Can you go first? I actually, before I, before my comment, I would like, have a couple of questions for the staff, that I wanna make sure. If we get past that, it's the CUP, right? So how often, I mean, who's, keep an eye on the city, obviously, is code enforcement or law enforcement?
In terms of the operation?
Operation, if it's running proper way, or according to the CUP.
Part of the annual fee is to have a dedicated regulatory personnel that would look at it, it would do, through the Public Safety Office.
Okay.
And then if there was a law enforcement issue, it would obviously be coordinated with law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department.
And second question, how often, like, we, is there somebody, when something going, somebody going to complain about it, then we're gonna go in? Are we, are we going yearly, or six months, or how regularly are they gonna be checking up on that?
That, that's actually a very good question. We have to go through the full procedure, but there'll be two components. The first component will be proactive enforcement. That's where the regulatory is, to go through, to make sure, not waiting for a complaint. There would also be the, I don't wanna say reactive, but it would be the service component. If someone did make a complaint, it could be Public Safety, it could be Code Enforcement, it could be the Sheriff's Department, depending on the nature of the complaint. But there would be the service component and the proactive.
Okay. Well, thank you. That makes clear. And the second, when, I just wanted to give my comment that, before I walked in this, this evening, it was very, it has been the most probably difficult, and the most subject that ever, ever since I've been on a council, and it's been almost a year and a half now. And it's, it's, it's very personal for me to, I discuss with my family, friend, argue with friends, ask, you know, Paul Chaplin, you know, them to pray for us to, we wanna make sure we do the right, make it right decision. We make sure to do the right thing for the city, for our community. It's not only limited to our family, it's to our entire city and the community, and it's very important. And, you know, we, to me, as I was growing up, marijuana was like a, it's been a bad thing. I always hear a bad thing, and I never really tried. So it's, it's always, I never wanted my kids to try. It's just the one thing, it's always been like, it's just a bad. But, you know, on the other hand, I was listening to everybody after I, you know, there's also, it helped a lot of other people, too, that, that I came to know, and I've been researching, and I've been listening to different people, and doctors, and everybody. It's, it's also helping some people. So, you know, medical cannabis helped millions, it did help, I don't know about millions, but how many people, but it does help. It's helped. And what I was thinking, okay, what I, it is still, I'm not, I wasn't sure, but Prop sixty-four, after that, it makes so difficult for us. We have to make, take a step. As a city leader, as a, as a council, and a mayor, we have to take a step to do something about it. And, you know, I agree with the Mayor Paris, like, I think we do, we, he has a vision, and I, before, I was disagreeing with him. I didn't really think, you know, we, it was, but now, listening to everybody, and I, I, personally, I agree with Mayor Paris. I think we, if we didn't take a step now, then we're gonna pay later, so I just wanted to see, I support Mayor Paris. That's all I wanted to say.
I'd like to say that I am so filled with emotion tonight, as I have been for the past several weeks. I went home and discussed this issue with my family, my fourteen-year-old daughter, this in the ninth grade. I asked her what were her thoughts, and she said, mommy, I trust you. I know that you're gonna do the right thing for the city. I'd also like to say that there is no one here tonight that is without fault in some way. Yet, I would never, ever question your faith, especially when there comes to a subject that we may not agree upon. But what I do know is that we have a responsibility to make prudent, rational, and mindful decisions for the hundred and sixty thousand people that we represent. What I also believe to be true is that if crime does go up, we will not be rescued by the county or the state. We must act as we always have.
I have a letter from Councilman Mann that he asked me to read, and it goes, "My apologies for not being present at what I believe is a critical point in Lancaster's history. I'm always on a pre, I am away on a pre-scheduled business trip. Originally, tonight's initiative was to be taken up last council meeting, which I was prepared to cast my vote. My request was to postpone this item again until February twenty-eighth, so my vote could be counted. Two more weeks at this juncture was not critical. Again, please accept my sincerest apologies not to make a difference. Sincerely, Ken Mann, City Council Member." Ken sent that to me today. He asked me to read it, and he said it was Chris Johnson's fault that... Okay, for mine. When we look at this, I look at it as, when they say money, I look at resources. So I'll tell a little story, and you can see where I'm coming from. About ten years ago, we had a meeting at Pastor Paul's Church. It was a war on gangs. The people of this community had faith we could do it, that we could lower crime. We had faith. And we did it. We lowered it over forty-two percent. Chris Johnson was doing the community homes. The community had faith. We had faith that we could do it. We supported those homes. We did everything for those homes. So this, we have a history of doing good things. Ten years ago, we put this on the wall. This city has changed since we did that. We've, we've had "In God We Trust" behind us, and other cities have failed when we haven't. Other cities have not prospered when we have. And I believe it's because we've had "In God We Trust" behind us. So we have, Mayor Paris asked us earlier, where are we gonna get the money? And I am saying to these people, to my councilmen, that I believe they're, they want to do the right thing. They, they honestly are looking for the resources. I'm just reminding them tonight to have faith in their community, to have faith for what we have accomplished so far, to have faith we can take it from our streetlights. We just saved over two million dollars on our streetlights tonight, tonight, okay? We looked at the areas Mayor Paris said earlier, ten to thirteen million dollars. I don't believe it's that much. I think it's, at most, it can be three-point-three million. Am I wrong? Yes?
The current ordinance would limit it to ten. At ten, it would be three-point, there'd be about four and a half with the annual fee. If you had more licenses, it would go up. There's a potential.
But we're, we're, this ordinance that we're talking about tonight is only three-point-three...
Ten licenses, but, I mean, it's the resolution, ten licenses. There's a question of the square footage in the license, so the bottom would be...
It's proposed at twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, correct?
I'm trying to answer. If you had the smallest facility, each of the smallest facilities were licensed at, at, at ten, the bottom would be three-point-three plus another eight-hundred thousand dollars annually for the regulatory, which is four. If the facilities that were licensed were greater than the minimum size, it could go up to whatever the, is prudent in the community, what the market would be.
So what's the amount?
The minimum is three-point-three, the minimum is four million dollars annually. It could be higher.
Okay. So with our solar, with Lancaster Choice Energy, with our streetlights, with "In God We Trust," we have money to pay for the crime that's gonna go up, in my opinion. We've already made up for those resources. I'm looking at this from a, I really don't even know where to start. When we look at this, it's federally illegal. It is, and what that means is, we're fourth on the totem pole. The feds are first, then the state, then the county, then us, as far as making laws, rules, regulations, correct?
Other than municipal affairs, but yes.
Okay. So we're trying to tell the feds what to do. Okay? I, I don't agree with that. I don't agree how we can do that. I sat on a commission with Chris Johnson ten years ago, and ten years ago, we said, if it's sold in pharmacies, I'm good with that. Shouldn't we be trying to tell these people? Shouldn't we be trying to tell our congressmen that if you wanna sell it? I'm not arguing that the difference between recreational and medical. If you wanna do it medically, and you say it works for you, it should come out of a pharmacy. That's my opinion. Okay? That's, that's, it's, we... we have a process for this. We're bypassing that entire process by doing this. And we're saying, we know more than the feds. We just had the most liberal president in history, and he chose not to make marijuana legal. He chose not to, for a reason. Brings up the banking issue, okay? It's a cash issue, okay? The crime that goes with, with having all cash, by not having bank accounts, by transporting it. The attorneys said that crime in Colorado only went up 1 percent. I don't know where they got that article from, because everything that I read, it's gone up at least 27 percent, up to 44 percent. Our traffic. It's going to affect our traffic. I'm disappointed in both of you for not bringing up anything on crime, anything from Public Works, anything on that, on how it's going to affect us and what we're going to do with it. You brought up a rosy individual plan for us, and you didn't really tell us how it's going to affect us, and it's how it's going to affect the community. Okay? I don't think that... We have Plant 42. We have Edwards Air Force Base out here, from the federal side. They're our largest employees here. I just had someone come to me and ask me if I could help them get their son a job, because he was fired, because he was at Edwards Air Force Base, and he had a drug test. All those people out there still have to follow regular and federal rules, all of Plant 42. And we're saying, we don't agree with that. It's, it's not what we should be doing. It's, it's not. We took an oath when we came up here. We took an oath to defend and protect the Constitution of the United States. We didn't say, "We're not gonna follow that law, though." We have an oath that says we're going to protect the Constitution of the United States, and we're not doing it. We're not following that law. We're saying we're gonna follow the state. We have letters from people that say, "Take a look at this. Take a look at this and slow down a little bit." Sometimes, we need to slow down, and I think this is one of the times. We look upon our faith-based community as our moral guidelines. We always have. In here tonight is our faith-based community, and they're saying, "Don't do this. Don't do this because they pay the price. We make the rules. They pay the price. They're the ones that have to fix the families. They're the ones that have to put everyone back together again." And I don't think it's fair to them for us to be able to say, "We're going to make this legal," and when they're counseling kids, when they're counseling people, and they're, they're saying, "This is a bad drug." They're gonna say at us, because they do look to us as leaders of this community. They look to Mayor Paris as higher authority. Those people that look at him and say, "He's gonna say it's okay," I don't think that's good. I think that all these pastors, our moral authority is telling us, "No, don't do this." At least mine is. I don't, it's, it's a gateway drug. I, this gets back to the same thing as what happens. It's resources against morality. We have to make the choice, money or morality. It's the same thing as what we did on fireworks. We did the same thing. We made a decision on fireworks, that it's not good for the community, or our community, to shoot off fireworks, because we believe it's dangerous for kids. Okay? The neighborhoods around us all shoot off fireworks. They sell it, they profit from it. Everyone profits from it. We don't. We have to spend thousands of dollars a year on law enforcement. We have to spend thousands of dollars a year to put on our own law enforcement, I mean fireworks show. So we don't do that. We're protecting our kids. I just think this is the wrong thing to do. I just, I would, I would urge all of you to have faith about where we've been and how we can get there.[924.23][924.23](applause)
Did Councilman Mann request a continuance of this?
Not to me, he did not.
And not to me, and I'm the mayor. And it's my understanding that Councilman Mann is in Hawaii on vacation, is what he told me. And the reason I'm calling him out on this is because the one thing I've really appreciated tonight was that we've kept a balance. This is a moral argument. This is a Christian argument. These are the facts that we know, right? Is, am I wrong about that? I, I thought we, we did that very well. I try to sit in this seat without stretching the truth at all. And that's hard. It really is, when you think about all the things that come, to, to, to get it so that this is, this is accurate, to be as accurate as I can. And I thought we've done that very well tonight, as, at least as best we can. But I did not take an oath to protect every law the federal government passes. I took a law to protect the Constitution. Those are two very different things. And I want to bring that out, not because I know the answer to the federal versus state argument, but because it's inaccurate to equate the two. Nobody here took an oath to protect everything that comes out of those people's mouth in Washington. They just didn't. The fact still remains that we have an enormous problem coming our way. Let's be clear what that problem is. Everybody who wants to can smoke a joint almost wherever they want to. Maybe not in the street, but good luck with that. Good luck with that. For whatever reason, they passed a law that says they get to do that. And there's nothing anyone can really do about it. Yes, it's gonna have a huge effect on crime. Yes, it's gonna have a huge effect on people losing their jobs, as well as it should, because we have about 80 people working for us, and the first one that comes smelling like he smoked marijuana, he's out. You know, "I want to do drug testing. My wife won't let me. She says it's demeaning." But that's the way it should be. Yes, those problems are coming. At the end of the day, it will land on my desk. Any way you look at it, it lands on my desk. I'm going to deal with it. It's going to be just like the fireworks. Trust me. It'll be exactly like the fireworks. Has anybody seen a diminishment in the number of fireworks on 4th of July in your streets, in your backyards, that kids are lighting off? No. They go to Palmdale. They buy the fireworks. They bring them home. And we have to bear the consequence. I'm not bearing it again. I, I see it coming. I'm not going to let this city bear it again. Until another way comes along, and let's be clear about something else. I am not saying it's okay that people smoke marijuana. I'm saying that this is the pile that was handed to us, and this is the only way we've been able, all of us, meaning the city staff, the planning commission, five meetings, have been able to figure out a way to sort it so we can at least tread water. And maybe, we might do some more. I think if we expand those neighborhood impact homes, we can see something. What I see with those is, wow, what we could do if we had the resources to expand the wellness homes that are in the neighborhoods. What we could do. I see all these things that might be possible, and have the people who are using it pay for it. All right, pay me bad for that. I'll bear it. I understand the amount of scorn I'm gonna bear, and I'll bear it. Don't blame anybody else. Blame me. I will bear this. And we will stay a safe, safe city. And the day we're not, we need a new change, we need a change. But at, as long as we can keep this city safe, I think we're doing our job. With that, I'd like the city attorney to read the motion.
The motion that would be proposed is to move introduction of ordinance number 1019, adding chapters 5.56 and 17.43 to the Lancaster Municipal Code, with, with section 17.43-110A-1B, revised to read within 1,000 feet of a public or private school, college, or university, parentheses excluding trade schools, and parentheses, and with section 5.56.040 and 17.43.040, revised to read, distribution, delivery, and retail sale of cannabis prohibited. Within the city, it shall be unlawful to operate a cannabis distribution facility, cannabis dispensary, and/or cannabis delivery business. And with the definition of development agreement set forth in section 17.43-0.030A, revised to read, cannabis license agreement means an agreement between the city and applicant governing the operation of a medical cannabis cultivation facility. The city manager or his or her designee shall prepare a form of cannabis license agreement to be used for the purpose of this chapter, provided, however, that the form of cannabis license agreement at must, at a minimum, provide that the applicant, one, agrees to and shall pay to the city an annual surcharge determined by resolution of the city council; two, covenants to not challenge the validity and forcibility or seek a refund of such surcharge; three, agrees that failure to timely pay such surcharge shall result in the immediate termination of the cannabis license agreement and revocation of the conditional use permit issued pursuant to this chapter; and four, pay the first annual surcharge at the time the cannabis license agreement is submitted to the city for approval. Next, replacing all references to development agreement to cannabis license agreement throughout chapter 5.56 and 17.43, and with the definitions of cannabis cultivation facility set forth in section 5.56.020A and 17.43.0A, revised to read as follows. Cannabis cultivation facility means and includes a cannabis manufacturing facility, as well as any facility wherein cannabis is propagated, planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, graded, labeled, tagged for tracking, or trimmed, or that does any, that does all or any combination of those activities. Next, adoption of resolution number 17-04, establishing fees regarding regulation of medical cannabis. And finally, adoption of resolution number 17-05, establishing the maximum number of licenses and permits that may be issued for cultivation of medical cannabis.
Could we add to that, in the event the city manager becomes alerted to extreme circumstances, he can pull the plug? Meaning stop any more of them from being issued?
The resolution before you tonight actually places discretion in the city manager as to the number of licenses to be issued not to exceed 10. So he already has that power under the resolution that is before you tonight.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, was that your motion that I read?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure for the record. Thank you.
And it's three to one.
It passes.
Okay, let's go back on the record. I guess I'm not in court, am I? What do we call it when we go back on?
We're back on.
Okay, all right.
We're back on.
City manager, you have any announcements?
One very quick announcement. For those that haven't seen the exhibit in the museum, it's absolutely outstanding, and I'd say anyone should go and see it while it's still there. How long is it there, Ronda?
It just opened last week, so through the end of March.
I'm sorry, what? People were talking. What?
Through the end of March. It just opened last weekend.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? City clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Michael C. Evans.
My name is Michael C. Evans. I'm representing the 10,000 Fearless Movement here in the Antelope Valley. In October, the mayor of Lancaster, Rex Paris, issued a $1,000 bounty for the felony conviction of gang bangers. In December, the mayor stated, and I quote, "If I could do a $1,000 bounty for Crips and Bloods who commit felonies in this town and make it dead or alive, I would. I would." I told you at the last two city council meetings that you can't, and even if you could, we wouldn't allow you. The 10,000 Fearless Movement in Antelope Valley won't allow you, and the concerned citizens of Lancaster wouldn't allow you. We're not going to allow anyone, Blood, Crip, mayor, district attorney, or anybody else target our black and brown youth. And you know who else won't let you? The Department of Justice won't allow you to. So I believe that your little $1,000 bounty for Bloods and Crips, which you would do as dead or alive if you could, encourages the Sheriff's Department to violate paragraphs 43, 50, and 64 of the settlement agreement between the DOJ and the Sheriff's Department dated April 28th, 2015. The monitors for the settlement agreement will be attending two town hall meetings next week, on February 22nd and 25th. During these meetings, we will reiterate that we believe that your bounty encourages the sheriff to violate the terms of the settlement agreement. So I request of you again to rescind your $1,000 bounty. I know the 10,000 Fearless Movement in the Antelope Valley support any bounty issued by anyone, Bloods, Crips, or mayor. And I'm telling you this, we are not going away. We will be a thorn in your side until you publicly rescind your $1,000 bounty. You see, Mayor, your words and the silence of the other council members who haven't said a word to renounce the mayor's $1,000 bounty, show us that you don't value black and brown lives. and brown lives. You say that you don't care about rehabilitating gang members. Well, we do, because all lives matter, even black gangbanger lives. And as a so-called Christian, they should matter to you. But based on the words that you've come out, that have come out of your mouth, it's evident that they don't. So we have a plan. It's called the Comprehensive Violence Reduction Strategy. It works in Los Angeles, and it will work here in the Antelope Valley. We ask that you show that you are a Christian by rescinding your bounty and supporting the Comprehensive Violence Reduction Strategy. Your actions ultimately speak louder than your words.
I don't see 10,000. The-- just, just so the record is clear, I have offered a 10, a $1,000 bounty on any Crip or Blood who commits a felony in the city of Lancaster for information leading to the arrest and conviction of that person. And that is a personal offer, not an offer on behalf of the city. And my wife said she'd give me the money. That being said, Jason Wayne Daleks? Not here? Okay. Fran? We started with you, and now we'll end with you.
Okay. I'll light it up, because everybody wants to get home. I just have a real quick-- go. Good evening, or I was almost just saying, "Good morning." Oh, yes, happy Valentine's to all you sweethearts out there. I just had a quick-- I just wanted to know about the disability parking. What's coming-- what's happening with that, if anything? Was it just parking on the, on the boulevard for disability parking?
We've begun to look into that, and we're cataloging all the-- I'm sorry, Mayor, can I answer that? I guess so. We're cataloging all the spaces and going to give a list of where all of them are. There are challenges of putting on the street, because it's not just the parking. You have to have space around it. You have to have drive--
Right.
--and walk aisles and stuff. So we're in the process of that, but it takes a little time to catalog, to categorize it and catalog it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for trying, and I know you'll get it done. No, it doesn't-- thank you, everybody. Good night. I can't go until--
Good night.
Rick and Tom, I'm stuck here.
I'd like to thank the staff. This is a long one.
Oh, by the way, one thing. I'm on your side. I'm with you, whatever you're going to do.
Thank you. Be on the side of the city. All right, we did that. Did that. Any comments from the council?
Comment it out.
Have I missed anything? My brain put working about 10 minutes ago. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 28, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. And Carol is here.